Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
7:00. I'll open this meeting of the Exeter Planning Board of December 8th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. And I'd like to start by introducing the members of the board. I'm Langdon Plummer, I'm chairman of the board, and to my left is our vice chair.
Aaron Brown.
Glenn English.
Nancy Belanger.
John Gruder.
These are all regular members, and Nancy's representing our select board this evening, along with other evenings, so welcome. We first have the minutes of October 27th and November 10th. Do we feel we have enough people here, or should we table for the majority? We're just short because of COVID and other kinds of things going on?
I wasn't here the 27th, so I'm not going to participate.
You're not here on the 27th, okay.
No, I know that, but I can't make a comment of something I...
Yeah, if we're going to...
It's a video, though. No, I could have, I said...
Oh, you could have.
Okay.
Sure.
Are we going to go forward, or?
Yes.
Yeah?
Sure.
Okay.
Let's do it.
I've got a couple.
Go ahead, Glenn, please.
On page 2, this is, I'm looking at October 27th.
Good.
Minutes on page 2, line 53. I think it should say comments @7:13.
Oh, yes.
Line 72. I think it may be easier if it says "The town manager brought to Mr. Sharples' attention", instead of "to his attention", because it's not clear who he is. So, "Brought to Mr. Sharples" instead of "his". And then on line 76, the town is, there's a floating "O" there, it should probably be "to", T-O. And on, I was almost going to suggest that this line just get deleted, but on 82, I think it would be closer to what my intent was when I made the sentence, if it says, "Asked when the original proposal was made." So I'm adding "original" and "made".
Mm-hmm.
And this, I think Pete Cameron brought this up, I don't, maybe he mentioned it to me. On line 87, because Pete had recused himself, because he's a resident of Riverwoods, the vote should probably be 400 or 401, and I'm not sure which would be more appropriate. Did he abstain, or?
I think he abstained.
He did.
So it should be 401?
Yes.
And the same would be true for line 95, which is also the Riverwoods case.
Okay, thank you.
And then on line 99, I actually don't, I don't know what SLR is, so could we spell that out, and maybe put SLR in parentheses?
Mm-hmm.
Dave, what is that?
Where are you?
On line 99?
Page 3 or 4.
Sea level rise?
What is it?
Yes, sea level.
Oh, sea level rise. I was doing stormwater, I was doing all sorts. Okay, so could we maybe spell that, or put that out in full?
Let's hope we don't all readily know what that is.
Yeah. There's so many acronyms sometimes, it's hard to keep up with them all. Line 102, just to make it easier to read, "Mr. Sharples noted", and I'm thinking, "put that, noted that, in Exeter comma". It just might read a little bit more smoothly. And then lastly, on line 107, I think that should be "Grading changes, not chances", is that right, Dave?
Changes, yeah. Chances, yeah.
That's your?
Yeah.
Put it to "changes". And that's all I had.
Anyone else?
Grading changes, yes.
Like a motion to accept as whether changes is noted?
Some of.
Second, please.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion, questions? Otherwise, we'll do a vote. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstentions?
One abstention. Okay, thank you. Number, excuse me, November 10th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 10th, 2020.
Okay.
Second?
Wouldn't second it. Any discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Abjection, excuse me, abstention, no. Objections or abstentions? Thank you. Those are accepted. All right. Now, continued public hearing on the Apple, no, excuse me. We are going to have a board discuss proposed zoning amendments for consideration on the 2023 town warrant, and Dave, I'll give the floor to you.
Okay, you know, okay.
That's what he said to do. Your right.
Okay. I was still going over the November 10th. Where is my...
Contract is here.
Yeah.
I know, you got it right.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
All right, good.
I was on the November 10th minutes, though, I got tied up in those. Okay. As you all are aware, the town is contracted with the Horsley-Witten Group to work with town staff to conduct a townwide audit, a complete audit, on our zoning ordinance. Nate Kelly from Horsley-Witten Group is here this evening, and he did present the initial findings to the board on October 13th. This presentation was a broader overview of the project, and we're now ready to go into some more specifics. And I sent you, I hadn't, by the time I sent the packets out last week, I hadn't finalized the materials for tonight, but I did send them via email. The chair did ask, I do have copies, hard copies of the reader, if anyone needs one. You're doing?
Yeah, Dave, I think I will take one, it'd be easier.
Do you have enough?
I thought I put it in front.
No.
Said yes, I probably got it.
No, I said yes, and then I said no.
I said yes.
I keep going back and forth. Yeah.
And just as we've said before, and based on the work to date, it will likely be proposed, if it gets that far, to delete the existing zoning ordinance in its entirety and replace with a new ordinance. However, this isn't a big change as it sounds, because since we're, as Nate will go through in a little more specifics of what we're proposing, when we change zoning districts, townwide, and go from 18 zoning districts down to nine, I forget, nine, right? So that affects the whole ordinance. The ordinance is riddled with references to zoning districts, so all those have to change. And so, there's a lot of things that are changing that aren't substantive changes. But, there's two ways to go. You know, explain every amendment to everything, which would be of volume, or just say, you know, delete in its entirety and replace with. It does sound like a lot, but that, so to boil it down, this memorandum from Nate Kelly to myself, dated November 23rd, 2022, is really informative. It's just about a dozen pages, and it goes through kind of the, you know, the minor changes, you know, some stand, like not, what's not changing, what's changing and why, minor changes and modest changes, and some of the larger changes. So that's what he's here to do tonight, to kind of go through that Reader's Virgin, and so, I think that's it, so I'll leave it to him to do his presentation, and then we'll have, hopefully have a conversation about some things, and I have some, a couple of questions I have for the board, because of a couple of things that Nate and I have been struggling with, but we'll get to that after the presentation and hear your thoughts.
Great, thanks, Dave. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thanks for having us back.
You're a patient man.
No, it's great to be here. And just to mention one other thing, you know, for the folks who are going to watch this, I think you've all probably gotten a look at the full ordinance draft that we've developed, and so, the other thing we did is, as you're reading, we tried to take pains to indicate every place where a section did not have a substantive change. So if you're the kind of reader who wants to check every single reference and just loves to read zoning, that's great, go through and do it. If you're the kind of reader that's going to say, okay, there's really nothing to see here, I'm going to move on to the next section, you can do that. So there's a lot of that in that document that will let you skip if you want to and not check all the references. So, without further ado, we are going to go through a lot this evening. I'll try to move as quickly as is appropriate so we can get through this, take some comments. Dave's probably mentioned, you know, this is our first introduction of the detail. We talked about the high-level stuff, we're going to talk about the detail for the first time tonight. Take any questions, that would be great. We are going to have some public engagement. Oops, you have your two hearings coming up, so this is in no way the last bite at the apple here, as we go through this. We're going to keep working, and as Dave said, there's a small handful of unresolved issues, and we'll, you know, sort of bring those up and walk through it. So what is this all about? Again, for the folks at home who are watching this, we covered this a little bit, but you know, our land is finite here, and pursuant to the goals of the master plan, Exeter wants to be a good steward of the remaining open land that you have in your open space in rural areas. There is a housing crisis, it's nationwide, for those of you who, you know, read the national news, but in New England, it is particularly challenging. Our housing prices are high, land values are high here, so it's pretty difficult for people looking for starter homes, people looking to downsize, people looking to sort of change their accommodations, or buy for the first time to get into the market and find something for themselves. So different housing types are really a big part of what's needed to keep a community vibrant and serve folks from all different backgrounds and ranges of incomes. Infrastructure is expensive, for those of you who have been reading about the cost of materials lately, this is, I mean, infrastructure was expensive 10 years ago, and now it's probably, you know, 50 to 100 to 150% more in terms of cost of materials for that. So when we start talking about roadway networks and water lines and all of those things, towns really need to be mindful of how far you're pushing out into your undeveloped lands, because it is really costing you money to do that in terms of services. So zoning changes, how can they help? We can limit development potential in more rural areas, which you've really already done with the zoning that you have in place today. We can provide stability for residential subdivisions, make sure that they're conforming and have options to sort of, you know, grow in a natural way that subdivisions do as we go forward with accessory dwelling units and those types of things, create a variety of housing type, walkable centers, and proximity to your retail services, whether it's in your, you know, main core area down here, or there's, you know, some selected, like, small stores in less developed areas of Exeter, and we want to make sure that we preserve those opportunities, that that's the kind of thing that can easily get missed in a rezoning, and all of a sudden you've made, you know, a small antique store or a small corner store non-conforming unintentionally, and that makes it hard for folks who own those. So growing smart, you know, this is a diagram that we often use just to talk about creating livable places, supporting the local economy, these principles that we've gone through with the master plan, you know, four or five years ago, about being smart about your infrastructure, trying to promote walkability and creating a range of housing. And in your master plan, you know, these were the six themes that you put forward, and this zoning effort is really growing out of that pretty organically, very consistent with the content that you have in that plan today. A couple of important questions that people may ask. There's a lot of changes going on in this, and a lot of different issues are tackled in the zoning documents, and somebody might say, well, what if I don't like this piece? Like, this is going to affect my property negatively, and I don't like this particular standard, so this has all just got to go. We don't have to throw the baby out with the bathwater on any of this stuff. If there are pieces, small pieces, standards, individual issues that the community's not comfortable with, and any of these, those can either be removed, adjusted, and we can move forward with sort of the bigger picture of what this is. So you don't have to throw everything out if you're not happy with a particular piece. When we adopt these, are we all set? Do we not have to go back to zoning? And the answer is no. Right? So zoning is never finished, as I tell folks, but importantly, there's, what we'll talk about today when we go through this, there are a number of areas of your ordinance that we are not tackling, specifically because we didn't want to overextend ourselves and get into too many different issues. We were thinking about land use and the way this community's going to grow, we weren't thinking about signage, for example. We weren't thinking about, you know, sort of those different one-off elements, and we kind of left them be. Doesn't mean they don't need to be revisited, but those are for another day. And then anytime that you do a zoning piece of this scope, as you go forward, you may find things didn't quite work the way you thought, or somebody finds an adjustment that you weren't aware of, so you are going to have to come back. So, you know, once this gets done, as big as it is, you know, zoning is like taking care of a house. It just, you just keep going, there are always things that need to be updated and repaired and going forward. So let's talk about the structure. You have 14 sections in your current ordinance that basically going to stay the same. We didn't mess with kind of the bigger sort of numeric structure of this, with the exception that Section 10 is deleted, and we'll talk about that as we go forward. So removing that section, just renumbered subsequent ones after that, basic structure is the same. So let's talk first about those sections that have modest or no substantive changes. I'll go through these pretty quickly. Sections 1, authority and purpose, that establishes the authority of the town, we're not changing any of that as we go forward. And then Section 14, all the way at the end, which talks about the legal validity of the ordinance, the severability clause, as it's sometimes called, no changes. References throughout the ordinance, as Dave mentioned, this is the reason why we have to sort of push the old one aside and adopt a new one, is because 7, 8, 9, 11, 13, all of these different sections with open space development, historic district, natural resource protection, administration enforcement, there's really no huge changes to these, very modest, if any, but the references to other sections and the numbering and those things, sometimes things got shuffled, those have been updated to reflect that. Board of Adjustment, when you look at this section, you're going to say, oh, whoa, there's a lot of new material here. There really isn't. What we did was, is we took your existing ordinance that talks about the very basic powers and responsibilities of the Board of Adjustment, and we compared it to the statute, and what we saw was that your existing ordinance covered about half the material that's in the statute. So we basically took the other half and inserted it. It's word for word, it's basically a reflection of the statute, which is what you want, that's appropriate, but it's now in your ordinance, so it's for the full scope of things that are covered in state law are now reflected in your ordinance. So it looks like a lot of new stuff, it's really just completing the puzzle and staying true to the state law that enables it. Section 5, so there's a lot going on in this section today, it's your general regulations, right? So you have demolition review, height regulations, sign regulations, landscaping, performance standards. So again, these are not substantively changed. There may be some renumbering here, but what you read in your ordinance today, and you read there, you're going to see the same language. Existing lot regulations in Sign 5.3 is a little bit different, because some of the language in there is no longer relevant based on what we did with nonconformity, and we'll talk about that. So we have some new, what I hope, what I believe is better language in nonconformity that covers more of the issues that you're going to see here in Exeter and gives you a clearer path to review. When we did that, some of that language that was in 5.3 today became obsolete, and so that was removed. And then there's a minor change about corner lot clearance, what talks today about street intersections, and we just expanded that to be street intersections and driveways. It's probably what you do anyway today, it's just clarified in the ordinance language. Yard regulations, there is a section in there today on transition requirements that are removed. The community's been doing a lot of thinking, starting with the MUND, which is, I think is 619 today, about how areas with either higher density housing or mixed use relate to neighboring residential areas, and the yard regulations that you have in there today are sort of a blunt instrument that force setbacks that are really not good for the street experience. And you have a lot of tightly developed areas in the community that are really well-designed, with sort of one type of development on one street, one type of development on the other street. It's all very natural, it works very well, so this type of language, I think, is counterproductive to that situation, and so we removed a lot of that in favor of the new dimensional requirements that we'll talk about a little bit later. Off-street parking, again, some housekeeping there, because we have new district names. Section 6 is your supplementary use regulations, so this is where you get into a lot of like performance standards and those things, really very few substantive changes. One of the things you will see is, in your ordinance today, I believe that accessory dwelling units and retired plan community, those are notes now under your use table and your dimensional table. A better place for them is here. So same language just got moved to where somebody is more likely to look for them as they go through it, performance standards related to a specific use. Epping Road Strip Management Ordinance, C3, so here's an example of where we'll talk about the districts. The C3 district has been combined with the industrial district to the east, and the business park to the west, and along Epping Road. That has all become sort of one commercial district, as opposed to three different districts that you have today. So some housekeeping had to be done to deal with the changes there. Manufactured housing parks, we just changed manufactured housing to mobile homes, that was the intent of it. What's happening today is that we used to consider mobile homes manufactured homes like that, that was sort of interchangeable. Now there's a lot of manufactured homes that are not mobile homes, that are being used, just like dropped onto lots, and they look like any other constructed home that you would see, so we just wanted to make that distinguish. In the mixed-use neighborhood development, there are design standards that you see in your ordinance today that we developed as part of that. We removed that to an Appendix B, and we'll explain why that was important a little bit later, but the spoiler alert is that we're applying those design guidelines also to types of multifamily development. So instead of just being applicable to the MUND, we moved them to an appendix, and now the MUND and the multifamily answer to those design guidelines. So same guidelines, same standards, now more broadly applied to do different kinds of development. The healthcare district, where the hospital is today, this is absorbed into a new urban Core 2 district, and so the way it operates today is, the hospital has its own district. The way the proposal is, the hospital is a use within a larger district, it has all the same performance standards associated with that district today, just a reorganization, so we didn't have two different districts. Now we have one district, the hospital is a potential use there, and the performance standards associated with that. standards associated with that. All right, so now we're going to get into like where we dug in and where we proposed some significant changes. So we're moving the definitions to appendix A, it makes the ordinance a little bit more readable. That's not a substantive change, but as you, when you look through this, we added a lot of definitions. So those of you who are sort of into the nitty-gritty and getting into the weeds, a rule of thumb that our firm has when we do zoning reform is we add a, we make sure that almost every use in the use table has a definition. It makes for a lengthy definition section, but that's where you often have a lot of argument, is whether or not something is classified as a particular use at the get-go. So we like to have, I mean, unless it's like completely obvious, almost every use that's listed in the use table now has a definition. Okay, so examples of new definitions, differentiating between light and heavy auto repair, so that's basically like your oil change versus your body shop, neighborhood and regional grocery stores, big chain versus neighborhood scale, light and artisanal manufacturing, standard and small-scale multifamily, we'll get into the difference between those two. Farm-related uses, this is like a really important thing because farms have changed, you know, this is not a super crazy agricultural community like your neighbors in Stratum, but you have farms, you have agriculture, and the related uses are a big part of farm viability. And over the last 20 to 30 years, 40 years, what those uses are has changed a lot. Farmers are a very industrious opportunistic bunch, and any way that they can, any good way they can make a buck, they're going to do it. And so the kinds of activities, you know, whether it be corn mazes or shops or processing or whatever it is, we clarified, you know, what those could be. And then another example is like artisanal food and beverage production, this is a big trend, you know, folks doing small batch, you name it, small batch, insert noun, and that's an important part of sort of like a small-scale local economy. All right, so the zoning today, here are your 18 zoning districts. It is pretty complicated, but I mean, you folks have been doing, you've been doing business with this, so you're making it work, there's probably a lot of institutional knowledge with that. An important thing that we noticed in all of our reconnaissance, we did a lot of on-the-road driving around looking at this, is that this is really more of a reflection of the uses that you have today, which is completely appropriate. But when we started thinking about the discussions that we had in the master plan, there wasn't necessarily zoning in place that was really tailored to the things you talked about that you wanted in the future for certain areas, whether it was Portsmouth Avenue or, you know, whatever that may be. So these districts, while we tried to consolidate, to make things a little bit simpler, we also tried to think about that vision of going forward and how that would be sort of geographically distributed. So here is the current draft, there's still probably some work to be done on this around the edges, but like I said, we spent a lot of time out in the fields, driving up and down streets, looking at what's been in place, thinking about the age of different neighborhoods and what you're trying to achieve in your master plan. So going back, oh, sorry, so back, it's today, that's the proposed. So a lot of the basic pattern is still there, but fewer districts, fewer folks to deal with. And again, you know, getting into the weeds on this for those of you who want to take a look at this is a good thing. I'm going to go through these, keep going to try to get through this here. So the establishment and the designation of districts, one of the things I wanted to mention, and you can see the hyperlink here at the bottom, and we'll make this available, we know that for the everyday resident, for the everyday business owner, they're going to ask, well, what does this mean to me? Like, there's a lot of stuff here that either I don't understand or this is too much, but what does it mean to me? So we have a map that we put together where folks can go on this application, this website, may take them a minute to zoom into their particular parcel, but when they click on that parcel, they'll see the existing zoning and they'll see the proposed zoning. So it sort of like sets that baseline, okay, I was, you know, rural residential and now I'm neighborhood preservation, what does that mean? And they can go to that section and sort of read through it and make sure that they're comfortable or not, and then they can bring it forward. But this really just gives you a chance to see parcel by parcel, what is it today and what is the current proposal, put forward. Speaking of neighborhood preservation, so this is the outlying areas of Exeter today, lots of open space, lots of single-family residential subdivisions, and this is basically, you know, the, there's not a lot changing here. There's not a lot of sewer water available today, and this is really designed to retain the existing character and development potential that you have out there today. This should be business as usual in these outlying areas. Residential transition, now, so this is where you're moving from the neighborhood preservation that's sparsely developed, and you may have some existing neighborhoods that are in different areas, like that one on the left there, sort of on its own. And then you see you have a lot of it that's sort of transitioned, as the name suggests, either into commercial or mixed-use areas, into busier areas of the community. So these have smaller lots, there's a greater diversity of housing, there may be single-family, two-family, multifamily, sort of a mix, healthy mix of different choices there. Some of this has some spotted little pieces of commercial along the way, so there's a lot happening in this district, and we tried to capture all those different opportunities and really set the stage for these, for this district to be dynamic, which is what it is today, but also not overdevelop it at the same time. Keep it sort of at that modest human scale that you see today throughout the community. Mobile home parks, you've got four of them on here, retaining the district that you have today. So again, this is business as usual, this is what is happening today. For the folks who live in these mobile home parks, this is an important housing choice that you have in your community, these have been around for a while, so we wanted to, you know, retain that in the zoning proposal that you have here. Neighborhood commercial, so this is where you have smaller scale, like mix of uses, there may be some large-scale office and medical, it can accommodate multifamily, so again, this is another dynamic district that you have today. So out on, I think that's Route 27 off to the right, and then you see a little pocket of it on to the left where there might be some sort of like neighborhood scale retail in that area. So just wanted to keep that area developable at its current scale and keep the mix of uses that you have today, but not the same residential focus that you would have in the residential transition.
And let me just jump in on that, too.
Sure.
That's the neighborhood preservation, and that, you want to go back, the, oh, right there, yeah, okay. The one on the left, the little NC, that was neighborhood preservation, I mean neighborhood preservation, neighborhood professional. It was NP, and that's where the Kingston Road, that little kind of commercial subdivision is with the condos, you know, and Yeti Landscaping is right next door, and then, yeah, there's several, there's a cabinet maker in there, there's a couple of those. So I changed the name to neighborhood commercial because neighborhood professional seemed to denote professional office, but there really wasn't a professional office. And then the NP district on Hampton Road is where Churchill's is, is where the daycare is, where, you know, several other places, so it seemed more, so I just basically, but we did expand it, as you'll see, it's on Hampton Road now on the left, but then, you know, where that top arrow, the middle arrow comes down, but then the arrow goes up to the right, further down toward Hampton. I included those parcels because that's like Chemtan, Brookside Variety Market, you know, they're already commercial, it's a mix of commercial uses on, so we expanded that neighborhood professional, called it neighborhood commercial and expanded it down Hampton Road to recognize the commercial uses that are out there.
Did you capture Sperry Tent property?
I believe we did. I believe that's right, that's right across.
By the mobile home park.
It's right to the left of the mobile home park.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right across from Brookside Market, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the idea was.
Get rid of the nonconformant, right?
Get rid of the nonconformant and give them a little more flexibility because these businesses now that are, you know, like, and that's a commercial residential corridor, you know, I mean, your main thoroughfares always have a mix of uses on them, or, you know, they just usually do, from pre-zoning, you know, the markets out on Kingston Road as you go on, there's, you know, a couple of market, laundromat, whatever. So it just gives them a little more flexibility, so like right now, if they want to, you know, put a small addition on or do something, you know, they have to go get a variance through the zoning board, you know, which is a very high threshold, but they're in existing use. So that was kind of the goal, is to make it, you know, existing uses to be able to, you know, use their property without having to go through a lot of, you know, process, you know, special exception variances, you know, they still trigger, if they trigger planning board, that's not changing, they'll still come to the planning board, but these other steps that I feel are unnecessary for existing uses that have been around probably before zoning, so.
So, Tom and Seckard, Holland Way is in the?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
All right. Is that in the limited commercial? That might be limited commercial, those colors are pretty close.
I think you're right, yeah.
Yeah, it's in limited commercial. That's Holland Way.
Yeah.
That's a little more, it's a little more, that's a little different.
Yep.
Go ahead, yeah.
So as I mentioned earlier in sort of the preamble, the commercial, we were talking about the C3 district, you know, this area of the community has three, the larger red piece here has three districts on it. On the eastern edge is an industrial district, on the western edge is the business park, and then you sort of have the commercial through the Epping corridor, through the center. These have been combined into a single district. All the use allowances that they enjoy today are there. A lot of the performance standards that you worked on years ago related to Epping Road are still in place, there just didn't seem to be a reason, you know, similar to the hospital, you know, a business park didn't need its own district. It can be a use that's regulated within a district, so you're not flipping around the ordinance and looking at all these different columns, you're in one spot, find your use, and you can see the standards associated with that. We talked about this at a previous meeting, this is a good example, that western edge where you see sort of like, it looks like home plate in baseball, like that's the property line, and if you look at the district today, it goes much further out to the west, and I'm not sure exactly what the thinking was on it back then, but it's all wetland. And so this is an example of where like Dave and I and some of my folks were able to look at this and say, if we just match the lot line here, no one's losing their property rights, no one's losing their development potential, and we're pushing that wetlands into the neighborhood preservation area where it's a much better place to make sure that that area stays protected and there's not going to be arguments in the future about what can and can't happen there. It now is sort of, you know, not part of the business park.
And just a note on that as well, residential uses is not allowed in that district right now, and it is still, we didn't propose allowing it. Although, despite the fact that that zoning district has had the majority of our residential units that have been built in the last 10 years, that have been approved in the last 10 years, are in that district. Yeah, about 400 or so. So, but, you know, didn't feel it was appropriate to necessarily, you know, I think.
That's really, that's the big debate, if you ask me, on the zoning.
Yeah, I mean, if you do, if you do allow it, you know, then you'd probably allow it similar to what's there, very, you know, multifamily, very high density.
Yep.
And that's what you're going to get, I mean, that's what.
What we're already getting.
Well, that's what you're already getting, but then at the, you know, potential expense, once you build it that way, there's not going to be a commercial use in your life, in our lifetime. You know, so if you want it to be a combination of commercial, so I just wanted to point that out because I know it is a, yeah, it is a decision to make.
Very controversial spot.
Yeah, it is. Agreed.
So I think, Lang, you had brought our attention to this earlier, here's the limited commercial.
Yeah.
Just a little bit further northwest of the neighborhood commercial, and this is where you have more sort of coordinated campus-style development, so that's what's captured in this particular district here.
I'll go back to that one for a second. Just wanted to, this one, Holland Way doesn't allow residential now, it does not, we kept that same theme of not allowing residential, there's not, it looks like a lot of land area, but there's really not a lot of potential that is against our Exeter reservoir, there is some wetlands, there's the gun club, there is some soil contamination issues in some spots, there's access issues, it's a controlled access right-of-way, Holland Way, which the state, when they due it to the town, made, you know, kept it, it's called a CARO, Controlled Access Right-of-Way, and there's only one access per parcel, and I believe with, I'm not sure there's any accesses left, Liz, I think there might be one access left. So it's not like you can get a bunch of driveways on there anyway. So limited commercial, but yet limited development potential due to the size, but we, I just wanted to point out, we decided to keep it non-residential like it is today.
Okay, so there's two urban core districts, and this relates directly back to when we did the work on the mixed-use neighborhood development ordinance. You remember, we had a lot of public engagement around these different areas. So the urban core one is divided into two separate areas, one is, I guess we'll call it the Lincoln Street area, and the other is the downtown area. And the, you know, the point here is to reinforce what we've been talking about for years on these areas, is to allow for, promote, you know, a more walkable mixed-use environment. And these, the reason this is different from urban core two is these two areas really have their own character today. These are distinct places that people identify with, you know, they immediately know what you're talking about when you talk about Lincoln Street and that area, for example. So the context there is important and has been baked into the ordinance for these two, and they also operate at different scales. So again, the same conversations that we had back when we did the mixed-use neighborhood development, is the Lincoln Street, you know, any redevelopment there, any infill that's going to occur is going to be at a smaller scale than what you see in the downtown area just based on the existing fabric of what you have in place today.
And then, can I add just before you finish? Like, so those two purple UC1s were C1, commercial one, they were both, the Lincoln Street area was owned commercial one, and the downtown area, except a small strip of the downtown right along the Swampscut River was WC. They were almost, you know, I don't know if I ever found a difference between, I mean, there might be a little difference, one was like, you know, gave the 50-foot height on the back of the buildings on WC, but there was very little difference between the WC and the C1, so we combined those, we called it UC1, and then we, you know, zoned them both UC1. So they were both C1 basically before, and we just changed the name, but we did do some, well, the MUND, we followed the MUND, I think if I write, you went 50 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because the MUND is allowed 50 feet in the zone, and that's going to stay the same.
Yeah, basically, this has been sort of an evolution. What the MUND did, before the MUND, it was really hard to develop what you wanted there. The ordinance just didn't have a good fit for sort of multifamily, mixed-use kind of development, and so the MUNDs just sort of quickly solved that problem by creating a new use. This just takes it up to the next level, so everything about the MUND is still in place, but all the other wraparound standards and allowances in there now fit the vision of where you want to go with these areas. Portsmouth Avenue, the urban core two, so this is, you know, this is really similar in scale and intent, but there's, you know, there's likely to remain a more automobile-oriented environment. You have, you know, a giant road running right down the middle of that area, and people expect to be able to access these properties from their cars, that's, you know, part of the thinking behind going there. So the mix of healthcare, residential, you know, likely to remain auto-oriented, but the scale of development, making sure that a mix of uses is allowed and multi-store making sure that a mix of uses is allowed and multi-story. Some of the buildings and the plazas that you have out there, I drove in that way again today in the afternoon and kind of looking around, and you just, you know, if you've been at this a while, you, you see things flip over, and it's, there are properties there that are gonna flip over in the next five years probably. Um, and so this, with this in place, you'll be in a much better position, um, to capture a mix of uses rather than just sort of a, uh, these sort of homogeneous, you know, formula approach to the property.
Yeah, and just let me jump in on that, you know, Portsmouth Ave, that, there are some, the transportation, that's probably your highest capacity roadway in Exeter. I mean, you got, you know, it was some points, you got, what, two, two travel lanes, I, well, no, you got, yeah, two travel lanes, one in each direction, you got two center-turn lanes, I mean, out by Stradamit gets even bigger, you go to double-double, I think this, you know, um, anyway, so you're not, uh, limited by that, so you can put, you know, this is some good capacity to bring people in and out of Exeter there to the highway. But also, there is some sewer issues with this capacity, with this, uh, with this corridor, there are some tight spots, the Webster pump stations, you know, um, there's a finite, you know, ability to, to move, uh, you know, sewer over to the siphons and onto the wastewater treatment plant, but we're working on that, but, so even though it opens up development, development will have, still have to come here, we'll look at all those capacities, and, you know, they, they will even need to make, you know, any necessary upgrades, uh, if they exceed that. So there, we, we decided to open that up, but knowing that there are some definitely lit sewers, the limiting capacity in that, in that section of town.
Private education is, um, you know, your, your, your institutional anchor here in the community. Um, so basically, this, this doesn't capture probably every property that Phillips Exeter owns in the community, but it really, you know, is, is the perimeter of, of the, you know, what we think of, how we experience the academy. This is where their, um, uses are today. My understanding is that today, you know, they constantly have to come in for variances because the zoning just not fit at all, uh, what they, what they do there. Um, so this really puts in place the types of uses that they would be interested in, um, and make sure that they have the proper review in place, um, to make sure they're good neighbors, which I believe they have been.
And then, let me, uh, sorry, I, I'll add to that. We did, I did meet with, uh, PA, folks at PA, and we went over all the, you know, kind of the use tables and what would be allowed, and they're very supportive of this. They, they were very excited to, to, you know, see this, because it just, it doesn't give, I mean, you know, they still have to come, you know, they, you see them a lot, uh, and we will continue to see them a lot as they, as they do, you know, do projects, and that, that won't change, but being in a, they're in a residential district now, and anything they do triggers a special exception and, you know, thing, and they go and they get them, you know, but it's just another, you know, added process. Uh, but now they will be in allowed use. Uh, they've been there, I don't know how long they've been there, but they've been there a long time. So it just recognizes the use and gives them a little more flexibility to use their property how it's been historically used.
Alright. Um, so the district use, this is where you get into the use table, your allowable uses. Today, that table is, uh, you, you all probably very used to it, as someone, as an outsider who started reading your ordinance years ago, it's hard to read that table. It's hard to keep track of what's allowed where, and to try to see how different districts relate to one another. Um, so if I were a particular developer who had a specialty and I was trying to figure out where I can bring my product, it'd be hard to do that with today's use table, how to track that. Um, so, um, then there's two different use tables, and so basically, um, we changed the current structure to what is more typical, um, that you see in zoning ordinances today, uh, which is standard land use matrix. The nine proposed districts are across the top, um, and there are rows for allowable uses, you know, you know, down the left-hand side of the page. They're divided up into these categories, which is sort of a nod to the way you're doing things today, but a little bit more organized. Um, and there's a key, so if there's a P, that means you're permitted. Uh, there may be a conditional use permit associated with that, there may be performance standards that you need to meet, but if you meet those, you're going to get your permit. Special exceptions are there, prohibitions, and then allowances for accessory use, either as a permitted accessory use or a special exception. This is what it looks like today, so you have your uses across the top, um, you have your, uh, you, I mean, your districts across the top, your uses down there, so just, we think it's a bit easier to read, you know, this is the district that I'm in, this is what I'd like to do, and I can basically quickly tell if it's allowed or how it's allowed going forward. Uh, density dimensional, similar in terms of restructuring. Um, we did, we, so we have a single column for minimum lot area. Today, you have like a double column that deals with sewer and water. There are discussions of sewer and water, but those have been pulled out into other areas of the, of the ordinance. Um, minimum lot area per dwelling, this has been eliminated. We've been talking about this one for years, it came up with the MUND, you know, this idea of sort of artificially restricting density, and the thought is that, you know, there's a lot that restricts density. The amount of parking that you need, your setbacks, your height limitations, your maximum building coverage, those are already all in your ordinance, very, and, and those are better tailored to a sort of a lot-by-lot treatment, it's, it's a question of design. So whether or not you can fit three units versus five units in a particular building, um, for a community who wants to diversify its housing, artificial housing caps like that are probably not a great idea. Um, what I will say, you'll see in the ordinance, um, there are density caps related to multifamily, and we'll talk about why that is, that's a, that's a legal issue, um, because in order to require affordable housing, subsidized housing, the inclusionary zoning requirements that you have, you have to offer a density bonus. So we had to put the cap in there so we could offer a bonus over and above it by state law. Um, so those are the only places that you're going to see that, that cap. Yeah. So greater minimum lot areas for parcels with more than one residential unit has been eliminated, so lots don't need to expand in order for you to accommodate more units. If you can make the parking work, if the building's the right size, if all of that comes together, then you can have the desired number of, of units that you have. We've added some language around half-stories, because there's a lot of pitch roofs in this community, um, so to accommodate that, and this is what the matrix looks like, you know. Obviously, you don't have to read it, this is sort of a glance of how it's organized. Um, there still are quite a few notes associated with this table. With the use table, I think we were able to get it down to like one or two notes. Um, this one still has a fair amount of notes associated with that, but you have that today. Non-conforming uses, uh, probably the trickiest part of any zoning ordinance, so if you're going to read this, you know, have your morning walk, have your cup of coffee, and then you can sort of dig into non-conformity. Um, we did expand this quite a bit. One of the problems with non-conformity, and this happens in New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut, all these different places that we work, is that zoning ordinances talk about non-conformity by use, and they talk about non-conformity by dimension, and that's it. What about non-conforming by parking? What about non-conforming by signage? What about non-conforming by, um, you know, access? These, so, so folks who have an existing building that may have been built 120 years ago, that has one of these odd non-conformities, everybody's left scratching their head, the planner, the board, the, the property owner, you know, how do we deal with this thing? So we've expanded the scope of non-conformity to really try to capture all the different things that could happen, and give you some guidance about how to move forward and how to set criteria, um, with those. So, the goal was to reduce the number of variances. Exeter is, is an historic community, that's not news to anybody. Historic communities are usually a mess when it comes to like trying to fit a 1960s zoning ordinance onto a community that was, you know, built 200-plus years ago, because the lots are all different shapes, there's driveways wrapping around things, there's all kinds of things, setbacks are different, houses are two feet from one another, 15 feet from one another, and then you try to do a one-size-fits-all in your ordinance, and all of a sudden, everybody's non-conforming. So we have really tried to get at that variation and reduce the number of variances that folks are going to need. Um, so for example, one of the ways this happens is, you know, you folks know what a substandard lot of record is, it's a lot that's too small. So if you have a zoning, uh, ordinance that says your minimum lot size has to be 10,000 square feet, and then there's a whole street that was built 150 years ago, and everybody's 8,000 square feet lots, now they're all non-conforming. And so what this allows for is with pre-existing uses, in that particular example, you're non-conforming by 20%. So we're going to let you shrink your setbacks by 20%. That may not solve everything, but it's at least a step forward and gives you a chance to get around some of these like small issues where you really just shouldn't be having to go to the zoning board and talk through this whole thing when I'm just going to be a foot over, because I want to put a path in or something like that, or, you know, put a, a bow on my window, that sort of thing. We will, we'll give you, we'll sort of like let that envelope shrink, um, as your lot shrinks to a certain level. It's not infinite, but, you know, there's, that is one way to sort of get at this. Um, so this really should, um, and then of course, like, clear language, uh, this is something that most towns know and operate on, but putting in clear language that, you know, if you're making accommodations for people with disabilities, you know, you have a clear path around, you know, these types of standards. The Americans with Disabilities Act covers that, that's now sort of very clear in the ordinance, provides protections for everybody, um, who, who, you know, who needs that, um, so that's, that's just revised language that clarifies all that. So let's talk about multifamily dwellings and townhouses. This is another thing that your ordinance doesn't, doesn't really do very well today, and it's something that it should, because you have a lot of multifamily in this town, you have a lot of multifamily of, of many different shapes and sizes. I think I mentioned when we did our reconnaissance, we were astounded by so many different types of houses in here, um, in this community, and we dealt with that a little bit when we did the MUNDs and the residential conversions, but we looked at this again, and basically, what, what we have in this proposal is you have two types of multifamily. We're calling small-scale and townhouse, that's one, and then standard multifamily. And so small-scale by definition is anything that looks like a single house. So it could be a large footprint house that has four units in it. So you see that happen with conversions, but now you can also build one. So if you have, you know, the, the right lot to accommodate, you can build what looks like a large, single-family home, but you might have three or four units of housing in there. That's what we're calling a small-scale multifamily, which should fit in well with a lot of the neighborhoods here. Townhouses are also specifically called out, townhouses are sort of stuck together side by side, so we have standards in there for how that can occur, looking at the form and the scale of these buildings to make sure that they can fit into these residential transition districts that we talked about before. Standard multifamily is kind of, you know, like a small or a large apartment building, and again, we're regulating height and setbacks and all of those things, but it's not the kind of thing that you'll drive by and think it's a regular house. When you look at it, you know it's a multifamily, you know, that there's either condos or apartments in there, and there are allowances for that, and again, they're subject to those design standards that we moved from the MUND into, um, Appendix B. So the form and the treatments of those buildings are going to have those traditional New England architectural features for a standard multifamily building. Maybe it has five, eight, 10 units in it, whatever that may be, um, that's what you'll get with this proposal. Solar energy systems is not something, um, your address, Dave brought this up, and, and so we gotta, we want to do this in this particular, um, proposal. Um, so, we, we looked at sort of three scales, this is something that we've worked on in other states and other communities. Rooftop is not regulated, I guess that's, that's the building code. Somebody wants to put rooftop solar on their house, they get to put rooftop solar on their house. If it's code compliant, they move forward, it doesn't come to you. Historic may need to deal with that, I'm not sure, but, but it doesn't, you know, it's not going to be a site plan review or anything like that. Small-scale accessory facilities, and I think we said a, a physical size limits, we've been through all the debates of how you distinguish between small and large, do you do it by megawatts, do you do it by height, and, and the easiest way, and the way that has the most resilience in the sense that it will last longer, is just to do it by size. If you start dealing with megawatts and that sort of thing, like, this technology is evolving so fast that what, you know, what transmits 100 megawatts today is going to change in size radically from what transmits 100 megawatts, you know, five years from now. So that's not getting at what you're trying to regulate here, we're just talking about size. So we, height, um, footprint, those are basically, um, how this is regulated, and we have a definition, I forget how we broke it out specifically, what the numbers are, but you'll see it in there. There's a small scale, and there's a large scale. So what you see here, this accessory, this is a small-scale, um, solar facility versus a large array, you know, that might cover, you know, 20,000, 40,000, 80,000 square feet, whatever that may be, that would be regulated differently, um, in the ordinance. Section 10, we talked about this, I think, on one of the first slides, um, so the growth management ordinance, this, this is creating con, for this conflicts with state law, it's not enforceable, um, and it just needs to be removed, and this is something that, you know, Dave's talked about with us for a while now, um, and so that has been deleted, uh, from the ordinance.
I just want to elaborate on that. That, God, you adopted the growth management ordinance in 1987, 1987, and then, and I don't know what the state law was at that time, but, uh, then you deleted that one in its entirety, and you have the current one in 2001, and one of the, um, many things, you know, it shall be based on the municipality's lack, you know, of capacity to accommodate anticipated growth, I mean, it has to be, there has to be, the need has to be, um, demonstrated, um, you know, in some sort of plan or document that I couldn't find, I, I don't know if we did it at that point, uh, but then one of the, one of the kickers is, an ordinance adopted under this section shall include a termination date. So you can only adopt growth ordinance, growth management ordinances for a set period of time. Ours had no time termination date in it. So I think I brought this up to the plane where, when I first got here, I asked, you know, the staff that had been here for years, Barb and Doug, and they're like, yeah, no, I, I don't remember it ever being enforced, you know, in a, in a very long time, so, and it wasn't being enforced, and I felt it was unenforceable, so now seemed a, a ripe time to, to remove it, and I think we should remove it. If, if ever you need one in the future, that doesn't, you know, doesn't mean you can't, you just have to do the studies, do the capacities, you know, justify it, and then, and then meet the state law, which it does not right now, so.
Thanks. So that, that is it. We could bring up the map if we wanted to, but it's probably best use of your time is to get into any questions.
I have a question, but it could probably be a longer discussion than we want to have right now, but I guess you're here.
Yeah, he is.
So, um, Dave brought it up, which I'm really happy that he did, and he knows it's a spot with me. On the Epping Road corridor, in my time on this board, has had the most substantial residential approvals by far in this town, and right now, it's, residential is a non-allowed use in that corridor. And, uh, how many units have been approved out there residentially in the last decade, Dave, is it 1,000?
Let's see, one, no, no, 130, 240, 250, 840, 135, 500-something?
Oh, that's it?
Oh, 500?
Oh, 500, and comparatively, of the rest of town, what do you think we've approved in that time?
I'd have to see the math, but I don't, I don't think close to that. I don't think close to that.
So, and, and I mean, that's just what it is, so, that has happened, that has occurred, that's something that we've experienced. Uh, so, we can spend tens and thousands of dollars on our ordinance, and if we don't abide by our ordinance, what are we doing? So I, and, and I get challenged when I think this through of, does it, are we fighting our own ordinance because residential is so eager to go into that area, and it's, it certainly is an untapped area of potential growth for the town, and the citizens of the town, uh, devoted significant resources- the town devoted significant resources to increasing that potential with parking studies and water and sewer expansion and sidewalk infrastructure, a lot of infrastructure at taxpayer expense. So, but that was really pushed with commercial, expanding the commercial zone as the flagship. So in your position, you're, I don't think have any political stake in the game, and I really don't either. That's what I'm trying to, that's why I'm bringing it up. So to me, I would be curious, in your opinion, when you take a step back and look at our town and do the study that you just went through, really digging into our whole zoning, does it really make sense for us not to have residential as an allowed use in that corridor, in your opinion?
I think it really comes down, I mean, you know, I've been working on and off in this community since 2016, and the discussions of that corridor have been commercial since that time. There is, there's nothing academic or analytical that would suggest you couldn't put residential there. You know, as a planner, physically, when I go out there, you know, I mean, it's not, there's not, they're not a neighborhood per se, so you have to think about that, access to services and goods and those things. Everybody's going to be getting in their car.
Right.
To go everywhere. So that's, you know, that's something for me that would need to be a consideration. I mean, you should be enforcing your zoning, you know, that's, that's part of the discussion, I think. But if you wanted to rethink that corridor, you know, market forces can be a reason to look at it again. You know, but, you know, Portsmouth Avenue has been a focus for, you know, redevelopment that would allow residential, and that's been in discussion for a while. So you have another corridor that has capacity, there's a wastewater limitation there, you know, that, that's been discussed. And so you talked about the investment, and you see what happens when you make investments in infrastructure, right? And it's a red-hot housing market. So it doesn't surprise me that folks have been knocking on the door to do that. As Dave mentions, you know, when you go residential, you don't get it back, right? So that's one of the things that we think about, for example, with industrial land. Industrial is not as important to Exeter as it's to other communities, but a lot of communities have, you know, big mills, industrial zones that have died, and, you know, and they, they're asking that question, okay, if we go residential, we don't get this back, right? And we don't know what's going to happen in the future. So that is something to consider when you're doing that. So there's trade-offs, right, with this. The fact that it's created, you know, seems like debate, like significant debate. I always have a bias towards planning, it's my job. So that could be a signal to go back and look at this area and say, once and for all, what are we going to do? Because you also don't want to keep like, you know, having to, allowing significant growth through variance is, is just not a great, you know, that's part of why we're here, right? It's part of why we're doing this.
Yeah, that's, that's the question.
Right.
Aaron, how many parcels out there are left that would make good residential?
I'd be happy to.
There's not many. All right, you're not going to put an apartment building necessarily between a couple of those old garages out there.
Why not?
I mean, you might, but.
For redevelopment.
You know, we have the, the.
There's land available.
The gateway property.
Yeah, thank you.
Beyond that.
There's land available.
Yes.
I don't know how much acres, but quite a bit.
Yeah, when you get water and sewer John, I mean, and you can go.
You could add hundreds, you could add another hundreds.
Still get it, huh, you think?
Hundreds of units, yeah, essential. Depends on how dense you want it to get.
Of course, that, that's not a neighborhood type.
No.
No, no.
Single, whatever.
I mean, you get, you get things, you know, there, again, there's a lot of trade-offs, right? So you're, you're not, unless you master plan the area and you get some really sophisticated developers, which could happen, you know, you could create small neighborhoods out there or more livable areas that sort of function as little enclaves. But you're gonna, you know, the, the trade-off, like multifamily housing is important. There are a lot of people looking for housing right now. That's why the market is so hot, so it's important to your community. And Exeter is way ahead of its neighbors, right, on dealing with, with issues around housing. So there is some, you know, there are, there are positive goals that are going to be achieved. But, you know, another, you have to, again, I defer back to the master plan, you know, a vision was set five years ago, that's, I think is still pretty relevant. And, you know, I would argue, so development by variance is one way to go. Development by zone change is probably the healthier way for a community to go. And I would argue that if you're going to make this kind of decision for, for Epping Road, then you got to go back to the master plan. You got to look at the text in that plan and see what it says, and bring it back to the community and say, look, the applications for residential development are not going to stop. So what are we going to do about it? Are we going to continue to sort of like fumble through this and permit by variance and have debates at the local coffee shop? Or are we going to say yes? Or are we going to say no? Right? You want to, that's your foundation, is your master plan. The master plan's the foundation for this kind of work, changing your resident ordinance. And I think it's one or the other, right?
Yeah.
As opposed to now, you're saying kind of.
To be clear, we're not saying.
That's the, that's the.
The zoning board that's saying that.
So from the Housing Advisory Committee perspective, I just want to throw something in that we've been talking about for the last two years. Our businesses are coming to town, and that's great, but they don't, they're concerned about the lack of affordable housing or housing options that we have. If they're coming in and they can't hire people, they're going to leave. So we need to kind of keep that into perspective, too.
That's it, that's completely real. I mean, I, I worked in Stratton several years ago, and I talked to all the car dealerships, and they are like, you know, giving it away. They are giving away hundreds of dollars' worth of tools and uniforms and offering every possible incentive to get folks to work there who won't because they can't afford to live in this area.
Yeah, so where I was going with this, we spent the last two years and started talking to our local businesses and getting their perspective. This is not something that we came up with, and, and this is them coming to us and openly saying this. And the other idea in my mind is we're, we're putting sidewalks in, we're trying to make it walkable. There's nothing wrong with having a mixed use to help with people being able to walk to work and not using their cars. There's, that can be a vision to have, and that's it for me. Thank you.
I'd just like to add personally, pretty much agree with, I think everything Nate said about, about that area. The reason why we didn't promote to, you know, I didn't put in a change in here, because it is a complicated area, and just multifamily housing being built out there might not solve your housing crisis.
No.
A lot of those units out there, you know.
Nothing's going to solve it, not one thing.
Or even provide housing for the people you're targeting. So, you know, but I guess my, my way of looking at that and saying, okay, this isn't ripe for a change yet, because in 2016, it was put for, for the voters, an article was put before the voters to change that zoning district to allow residential, and it was defeated by the voters. So that's just recent, that's pretty recent. So, so now, and when you, when I look at that zone, doing it by variance is creating this, you know, the just multifamilies in, you know, in the woods, if you will, complete automobile-oriented development. If you were going to do that right, you'd have to master plan it like Nate said. Take, take a real look at it. So that, that's something, and like you said earlier, zoning's fluid. Zoning can continually, you continually work on it. That seemed like a bigger thing to say, okay, let's, let's just keep it the same as it is today for this year. And if it's something, if it's something to tackle, I think it's a separate issue that you need to tackle.
And just let me clarify something. I'm not saying that allowing more housing, I don't, I agree with Aaron. I don't like the process that's been happening. We need to not keep having the variances, we need to know what's going on. I'm just saying, we need to keep in mind that if we want businesses, and we all do, we have to keep it in the back of our minds where we're going to have housing. If we want to be a walkable town and we want businesses, can we find a way to have more housing, businesses, and then be walkable?
That's what I believe the main target of this proposal is.
Portsmouth Avenue.
Well, Portsmouth Avenue, but all RT, residential transition in the UC1, UC2, all those districts kind of get to that and, and allow more flexibility for, for that. And a little more, you know, in four and a half stories, like, did you explain that? Yeah, that, that was pretty cool, the way he explained it to me, like, it's, you can go 50 feet, but it's four and a half stories, so they don't, they don't look as big, they fit in, you know, as far as height goes.
And that, I did want him to elaborate a little bit on the half-story and, and.
Yeah, it's sort of a, it's just an architectural thing. If you're, if you're, you want to give folks, you want to give designers some options on how they think about, you know, how they're going to mass their building. And so just by basically putting a half-story on top of, of a house in your ordinance, you know, doesn't force them to drag the peak of that roof underneath your height limit. It kind of comes up here because you're getting that extra half house. So there's just more livability and, and from a develop, I mean, it fits in with the community, it's giving you a little bit of additional housing. From the perspective of a developer, like the extra two units on a small building that they get from a, from a pro forma perspective is really important. In terms, you know, land cost around here is expensive, development is tricky on tight lots, and then maybe some tear downs involved, and so the costs are significant, and making these small accommodations to allow a little bit more is, is important for that viability.
Thank you.
Just thinking, I have one more question for you. And I don't, do you have access to the internet on that? Because we have a very patient applicant.
Yes, I understand.
And I was thinking maybe you could show them how this proposed change impacts their land.
A live.
A live case study right here.
Oh, it doesn't, I don't think it does at all.
No?
No, it doesn't at all.
The length of the.
So it's kind of a boring one.
No, but, but there's been rumors, there's been rumors, Dave.
Okay. They're in the RU, they're going to the neighborhood preservation.
Yeah, I read it 14, it doesn't change at all. Which is.
This is how easy it is to do for everybody.
So this opens with a little introduction that tries to explain, you know, the basics of how to use this. You click okay. You click on your layers here, and you see just the five layers that are on. So if I turn off the proposed zoning, here's the existing zoning. Turn on, there's the proposed zoning. And I do not know where the subject property is.
It's, it's up top, north one, yeah, go a little north, just keep going right.
Where it says beach and beach house.
It's just there right here?
Bingo.
That's it?
That's it. So there it is, and here's your, so here's the parcel ID and number, little arrow. This is the existing zoning. And there's the new zoning. So just very basic, just what am I today, where am I headed, and then you can look in your document.
And then neighborhood preservation, the goal of that was just basically keep neighborhoods, protect existing neighborhoods, keep them basically the same, but also recognize that within that district, there's all sorts of different types of neighborhoods. There's like, if you go down, a perfect example, the Folsom, Folsom Court, you know, off a high street, that is, like, I forget the, the size of the, you know, the lots there. But there's smaller lots, but it's fully developed. You know, there's no development potential now under our current zoning. But the neighborhood preservation was two acres, so, but then those smaller lots will become two acres. But then our work with nonconformity, our work with our setbacks, depending on the size of lot you have, the different setbacks you have, so it would have pretty much, I think, you know, wouldn't have a material effect on it. But then some people might say, oh my God, you're zoning me two acres, you know? And, and, but it doesn't necessarily have a material effect, but I didn't know how to deal with that. Most of the neighborhood preservation is okay. You know, it's, it's all, you know, but, but then as it creeped in, I didn't know what, I wasn't ready to call them residential transition, that you get a little more, you know, varied uses in, and you get into some, you know, some limited commercial uses and stuff like that. So they're not really ripe for that. But they were totally fit neighborhood preservation, so I struggled with people saying, seeing that, like, oh my God, you know, but it really, but, but trying to explain that it really doesn't materially affect them at all is difficult. You know, it's, it's, so I'm still, Nate and I are still kind of batting that around. So this is, you know, we got a couple more meetings, but I'll try to, I'm still going to try to figure that out is how we.
Is that the only area that you were struggling with, the Folsom?
No, no, that, and JD Hill, that whole area right up there, you know, JD Hill, right, right on that map there. JD Hill, there's a couple other spots that, it was like, okay, it's not residential transition, neighborhood preservation isn't going to hurt, and it's just going to stay the same, because it's going to stay the same. Allen, you know, Allen Street.
Allen Street.
Right, you go down there, it's going to stay the same. I mean, you know, maybe new houses will be built, you know, on existing lots as they age or something like that, if someone else buys them and wants to, you know, tear down and build new, but that's the only thing that's going to happen out there.
There was a carriage, that was another one that we drove down and.
Yeah, there's several.
And that was sort of the question we were asking, is as we drove down the street, you know, if, if I were looking for a house, or if someone was looking for a house in this neighborhood, what they're attracted to is this idea that this is, this is what it's going to be.
Right.
Like, I'm going to buy this house, and for as long as I stay here, this is what I'm, this is what I'm going to get. Whereas in the RT zone, it's, things can happen there. Like, things can change, your neighbors across the street, you can have different stuff happening, and, and people, there are people who like that, who want to be in an area that's active and changing and dynamic. And there are people who want to buy a single-family home on a beautiful street, and like, as long as I stay here, this is what it's going to be like. Whether my lot is 12,000 square feet or two acres, so that idea of sort of a stasis was sort of what was driving us. Established neighborhoods, we use the word stabilize, we're stabilizing these neighborhoods. They're going to be what they are for the foreseeable future.
And then a lot of these neighborhoods, unlike the RT, they were transitional, like there's multi ways to go through them, right? And, and there's, and there's ways out on all sides. Whereas the ones that I encapsulated in neighborhood preservation that I originally had in RT, but I'm like, these don't fit RT, was like JD Hill, was like Allen, was Folsom, they're pretty much dead ends. It's like one way in, you go into the JD Hill neighborhood, there's only two ways out, you know, out to Portsmouth Avenue, or back into town. You know, Folsom Court is a dead end, you know, you go down, there's a couple of, you know, cul-de-sacs off that street, and that's it, you all come back to High Street. And there's a lot of those like that, and those are the ones like Allen, you know, you go down and you can go down Allen, and there's a bunch of streets off of it, but there's only one way in and one way out off of Portsmouth Avenue. So those are the neighborhoods I struggle with, but I just, you know, I just wanted to mention that, well, so this may change a little bit once we figure out how to deal with that.
I just want to drive into neighborhoods I've been in for years, and Folsom's one of them. There's no reason to go down there, right? So just to get the visual.
Unless you live there, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, or delivering, or, you know, something like that. But it's, no, it's great neighborhood, doesn't, you know, there was a little opportunity that didn't come from a subdivision, remember you had one, there was a couple, there was a big lot right there in the center.
On Folsom, right?
Yeah, Folsom. But that opportunity is very few and far between.
Yeah, those houses were built when I was in high school, a lot of them, a lot of the neighborhood down there.
And another question where maybe we'll leave on this is, another question we're asking is, you know, again, how do, how do we best anticipate the concerns of the public? Do we want to do some outreach? Maybe we want to have a public meeting, put some stuff out on a website, whatever that may be. And so we're, you know, creating some tools and the reader's guide, and, you know, the full ordinance is annotated. So we're trying to present and package this, and, you know, it's tough material, and you try to make it as accessible as possible for folks, or allow people to zoom in on like the one thing that they're concerned with. But if you have any thoughts about your neighbors and friends and what they're going to be, what they're going to want to learn, what kind of questions they're going to bring, and you don't have to answer all those tonight, but, you know, that's, we, we need to design a, a process or, or a meeting or, you know, a website. or a meeting or, you know, a website, other things around that.
Yes, that's a good question. What does the board feel? Cause it, it's kind of a complicated, you know, complex when you talk zoning. And it's, I don't think it'll get the traction of a master plan where, you know, a couple hundred people will show up because it's like everything's on the table, where this is more focused just on the zoning ordinance. But how would you, I mean, you know, would, what do you anticipate needing for public outreach? You know, do we do, you know, public forums, how many, you know? Are you willing to, because I'd like to get people there. There's a last couple, not about this, on different topics in town. We, you know, we pushed it out all over social media, all over, blasted thing that we get there. We, you know, we get a handful of people, but it's, you know, when you get twenty out of, you know, sixteen thousand, it's a little bit like, okay, you know, maybe people are okay with this, you know? But I'd really like to try to get, you know, some feedback. But how, how do we, how would you see, like, because you're going to be the ones putting this forward potentially onto the warrant, and you got to be, feel comfortable, we've done our due diligence to get the word out. So I guess I'm asking, what would, what would that look like for you to be comfortable with that?
And that's important because when this does go before the people to vote on it, they're going to be overwhelmed. So people need to be educated or they're going to get into the polls and.
Boy, sometimes it takes a few times, yeah. So Exeter TV, we had talked to them before, I believe, about trying to help promote any events. Though we tried to do it with facilities thing and no one showed up.
Yeah, that one was, yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know, all we can do is try to get the communication out there. And I mean, shy of literally knocking on people's doors and offering them a ride, I don't know how else to do it. I mean, we talked about.
Well, it's not, yeah, I mean, I guess we can take care of trying to get the word out. I guess I'm asking what, you know, like, you, would you want to have a public forum? You know, maybe before a meeting or as part of a meeting? Or would you want to do something separate over, you know, at the town hall? We'll organize it. What do you, you know, what do you see?
You have to, you certainly have to attempt to have a public forum. Even if the same twenty people show up.
Right, I think the town hall.
Maybe more than one.
Can you do, all you do your part and commit to coming and then also bring a friend? Because really, when you, when you, when you have these things well attended, like the master plan, you get a ton of great ideas that you wouldn't have thought of. And it, it's just so encouraging when a lot of people show up because you get a lot of, you know, a lot of creative people, a lot of creative ideas, things you haven't thought of. And it definitely, you know, some people say, ah, it didn't change, you know? Almost every public forum, I've been able to change something. You know, maybe the project still moved forward and someone said, no, I don't want it to move forward. Well, that didn't, you know, then they say, ah, it didn't change. But we, we take that seriously and integrate, you know? So then it becomes a couple of people making the, you know, the more people, the more input is just definitely appreciated.
I'm thinking back to when we did master plan, because there's so much content here. And some people will be interested in their specific area. So I'm wondering if we might do pods or something like that.
Is this going to be available?
Yes.
What you just did?
Yes. We envisioned having a laptop set, it's going to be available on the website, but we envisioned having a laptop setup at the public forum and maybe stationed. And that would be one station where you could go over and look at your property and see what it is. And then once you find out, you could go to me, go to Nate and ask what that means instead of diving in yourself and reading it.
Yeah. And that interaction, that, that participation is what's really key.
Right.
Get the interested about that, so if we break it down in smaller pieces, I don't know how that would work, but that's a thought.
Well.
Presentation.
At the high school, remember, your master plan stuff was at the high school, our master plan? And I, I just wonder if parking congestion downtown, trying to do it at the town hall, it might be better to try to do it and like we did the master plan at the high school in the cafeteria.
People can just drive right up and.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if that's why we had such a good turnout or if more people were, you know, interested in the master plan. But, you know, sometimes parking can be difficult and when people have a hard time getting around, it's a little tougher to get parking for here or across the street, just a thought.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea, I can do that.
We had good participation up there.
How about?
Isn't one of the biggest concern, what's going to happen to my piece of property? Right?
Potentially, yeah, I would probably agree with that.
There will definitely be.
That's what I'm saying, that is available online, that I can look and see what's going to happen to my lot. You said you've done that to every lot, correct?
Well, yeah, the thing is with that is it's simple, it says, you know, what you are now, what you're going to be. But then you have to know to go into the ordinance.
So then what's the significance of that?
Find what those rules are that apply to you. That's the tricky part. But I agree with you, no, it's a great tool, it's great, it's awesome to have. It's just, it's not, yeah, we, people have to do a little bit of effort.
I think what's in it for me is the number one question.
Well, it's going to affect the.
That you have to answer.
No, absolutely.
And if you want to motivate somebody to participate, that's the answer you give them, what's in it for you?
Find out what's in it for you, yeah, something like that.
Yeah, how does it affect you?
Don't be a negative, oh, your property's going to be impacted. Come on, no. I think more or less overall, I think it makes it more flexible. I mean, property owners are going to be.
A huge thrust of this was to try to make things fairer and easier.
Yeah, it's going to be easier, more flexible to do what you want to do with your property, to use your property in a manner consistent with how you, how it's used today. I mean, that was the whole.
And I think that's an important part of the communication is, is getting that part of it out there so people aren't thinking they're being more regulated, not less in some ways, you know?
So is childcare, do you still have a connection over there, Lang, with SST to provide some? Do you still have a connection over SST to provide childcare for that night?
Oh, sure.
Right.
Okay.
That would sound wonderful.
So when, like, so when do you envision, when would the planning board like to have this? This is, and I'll tell you, it's December eighth today. The twenty second, we'll be back, we'll let you absorb what you've heard tonight, and we'll be back again on the twenty second, you know, to kind of continue the conversation. And then the board, if they want to move forward, you have to have your first public hearing on or before January twelfth. And that, which is a little over a month from now. But that's just your first. And you'd have, you could have a first public hearing, then you have a second in January, and then you could take action. So we got four, you know, till the end of January really to, but when do you see this forum? Because it's right in the holidays, I don't know if something, you know, sooner or.
I'd wait till January.
People won't be able to handle.
Have to wait till January. Do you think it should be after your first public hearing or before it? Probably before it.
I would say before too.
Well, there's not a lot of room there.
Well, if they listen to the public hearing, they might, that might entice them to come.
The only problem is once you have a public hearing, the first, the last day to have the first public hearing is January twelfth. Once you have that public hearing, that is the rules that are proposed. And if you make any substantive changes, you don't have time to issue another public hearing. If you make substantive changes.
Right.
Do you follow me?
Yeah, yeah.
What about the week before that then? One week before the first hearing? Was that the fifth?
Yeah.
Second, fourth, yeah, be almost right after, yeah.
Yeah.
The fifth.
Or it could be the ninth, the tenth, or the eleventh. I mean, you know, if everyone attends, you know, and hears the comments and the feedback.
I know.
Yeah, but it would be ideal to be, do you think that's okay to do it on that, that January fifth?
I don't know why not.
I don't either.
I don't have the town calendar log, sunk to my, whatever the right term is. But yeah, I think that would be better.
Let's shoot for that. And then at the end of the day, it is unfortunate in a town where you get one chance a year at it.
I know.
But if we're not completely comfortable, like I've said many times, you know, then we can always, you know, we can go through the process and if we decide not to put it on, you know, at the end of January, you get to a point like, hey, you know, there's too many unanswered questions, then you don't have to put it on. But that at least encourage us to go through that process to get there. And then make the most informed decision you can at the end of January. If it's ready to go on to the marked warrant, the board feels it is, put it on there. If not, we can always hold off and wait. You know?
It looks like there's a communications advisory committee meeting, January fifth, six thirty PM. The town website says that.
Yeah, potentially.
Usually downstairs or across.
Have they been meeting, because tonight?
They, they were supposed to meet tonight and they didn't have a forum, so they didn't.
Yeah, it's been canceled and they've been, yeah, so I don't know if that's going to happen.
I only know because I.
I think the high school's a great idea.
Should we do it on the fourth then?
The fourth then?
Just not to conflict?
I can't make it the fourth.
Okay.
No, no, do you think high school's better than Lincoln Street School?
I don't think, I think Lincoln Street School's fine, personally, but.
I always thought of the high school.
I've never.
Where I'm not master planning.
Where, where in the Lincoln Street School, do they allow you to book a room?
Well, if SAU sixteen, I don't think it would be any different than the high school.
We've had charrettes for Lincoln Street.
Yes, we did.
We did in the library.
We did in the library.
I can't remember the.
I would think the high school would be easier, Dave, frankly. More parking, bigger facility.
Maybe you'd have people walk.
There's a lot of different things that go on there every day.
You could drop people walking from the Lincoln Street area.
True, that's true.
I like that.
That is true.
And we have had meetings at Lincoln Street.
Well, I don't know their availability, so I'll look at both.
All right.
For, for, for Thursday. On five, what time do you think?
Seven?
Yeah, I'd keep it the same as us, just keep it.
Seven, right?
Seven?
Seven, huh.
All right.
Kids to bed.
Thursday the fifth, seven o'clock, okay.
So the other thing, like, when you think about things like this in the future to me, this impacts really the property owners, right? The people that own the real estate, not necessarily the residents, the most, zoning changes.
Yes, yes.
So we, the town of Exeter communicates at least twice with every property owner via the mail with a tax bill. So a pretty easy way to communicate these things in the future to me is extra little slip of paper in your tax bill. Because that to me, as a taxpayer, is a pretty relevant communication. Hey, here's, here's the money to run the town. And oh, by the way, this is potentially, this is happening, these changes are potentially posed. And direct them to your website or your more efficient communication. But it doesn't take a lot to let them know what's going on if you can in time. Because I don't know, once the December bill go out, it probably goes out in November, end of November, middle of November? We just got.
It just went up.
Like a week ago.
It was delayed for some reason. The planning board hasn't made a decision to even move it forward.
But we knew we were coming up with this.
Yeah, but I didn't know you were going to put it on the warrant.
I'm not throwing shade, I'm talking in the future, trying to improve our communication.
I'm just trying to figure out, no, 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 I know.
You know what I mean?
I don't know, I don't know what I'd say in November because the planning board hasn't decided what to do yet. So it kind of be speculative.
Well, I think, I understand that, because I know our timing is always our challenge. We always seem to be up against the deadlines, that further ahead of it like you like to be. But assuming we're still on this crunch that we tend to be in, I think you can say, you know, these things are being worked on, make sure you're checking up, drive them to the Exeter Town website, so. And then you can communicate further from there more effectively, just trying to get people to queue into that. Because I think that's happening more and more, especially with COVID, with more people staying home, more people socially distanced, still being affected. We have a board member not here tonight because of that, so I mean, that's still a very real element.
Yeah, we'll try anything, that sounds.
Well, until we start emailing tax bills, we might as well use the mail system properly or more effectively.
Well, I might not get there right away with the mail.
That's true, that's true. But we won't go there. We're already doing it.
I'll ask what the policy is on that and what we can and can't do with that, you know? So I'll, I'll figure it out.
Because we started talking about that with, trying to communicate with, when we, the registration with the email left, like, to add things and we, no one's clear on what is allowed and what isn't.
Yeah, because I've heard, I mean, it's a great idea, I've heard people say, well, put it in the water and sewer bills, you know? You get the, you know, like, yeah, granted, it only affects people, it reaches people that have sewer. But it is, you know, it's some, but I don't know, there's some discussion about that, so, no, that's a great idea.
Well, I just know, to me, it's, it's, you're a taxpayer and your zoning changes affect real property owners potentially very substantially, depending on what the change is. Like, for these folks here tonight, no impact, right? But just the potential probably impacted you, right? And impacted your decision process and the whole kit and caboodle. And that was based on speculation, right? And somewhat educated speculation dialed in, but a lot of people aren't. And a lot of people just kind of goes right by them and they don't even realize what's going on. That's really what we want to prevent, is people not being educated and not, you know, if they're uninvolved, we can't do much more than that, if they're not going to engage. But trying to get them engaged at least, right? You're probably listening to this hearing tonight because of what you were hearing before, so. It is the what's in it for me, that's I think what it comes down to a lot.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah.
You know? All right.
Okay, anything else?
The horse dead, Lang?
The horse is dead. Watch your email and your mail when you're in it. And watch the.
And then next time we meet, we'll have like little maps that we can look at.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'd like to thank.
That's true, it might change a little bit.
It's okay, I, I understand. I'll be happy to hand them back at the end of the discussion.
Oh, no, that's fine.
It's just easier for me to have them in front of me.
We will.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to thank Nathan for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
Doing such a fine position to get us totally confused, but some people are able to think more clearly than I.
I'm not done with this yet.
Okay.
Okay.
I got a lumbo.
Got a little.
Yeah, right, he's never really done.
Got a little PS coming up here.
Okay.
Like, it says zoning never stops.
And neither does Dave Sharpe.
Yeah, you're awesome, that doesn't happen.
This doesn't affect you.
Thank you.
So we've been working with the Rockingham Regional Planning Commission and the Master Plan Oversight Committee. And I'm going to be brief here, this is not to dive in or anything like that because Kristen Murphy had several other commitments today and tonight, so she was unable. But we were planning on coming to you on December twenty second and presenting this because this is a proposed amendment to our floodplain ordinance. And you have a copy, it's kind of a one pager as to, you know, the overview, the background, what it's doing, and then associated maps to show you the areas that would be impacted. Basically, it's making anything in the, right now, there's a one foot of freeboard requirement, but based on kind of the middle estimate, a potential sea level rise, like a four foot sea level rise by twenty one hundred, we're recommending, this ordinance is recommending changing that from one foot to two feet above, two feet of freeboard above base flood elevation to recognize the potential for the, you know, sea level rise. And then it also includes an advisory area, which is strictly advisory. It's, it's, well, that was, that's where the four feet comes in. Where, where there is now on the firm panel, we're recommending going one foot of freeboard to two, where the regulatory floodway and the floodways, the floodplain exists right now. Then for the four feet of sea level rise area that overlaps with that, but then may go further inland, we're making it advisory so people are aware if they so choose to develop these areas that they might be, they're encouraged, certainly not required or any type of legal encouragement, but we just put them on notice that you might want to give yourself a little more freeboard because a lot of the buildings built today will be around in twenty one hundred, so. And it's based on the middle estimate of sea level rise, because it's anywhere from two feet to six feet or higher, like six point three. And this is based on, the advisory area was based on four feet of potential sea level rise at twenty one hundred. So just take that home, look at it, we'll get a more thorough presentation. I just kind of gave the down in thirty one.
Insurance came up too, during the conservation commission, they talked about this and that it won't affect people's flood insurance, all of them. Their homeowners.
No, the flood insurance is based on where the floodplain is. It actually might positively affect your insurance because if you build two feet above the freeboard, that could be definitely beneficial toward your insurance because your, that your risk is, you know, you're less.
The risk, the question. The risk, the question came up, though, I thought it was important to think for people.
And we also looked at this.
What's in it for me thing.
Yeah, it was, it doesn't affect existing, if you're existing, you can, you know, and your, you know, your first floor is, you know, at or below the base flood elevation, it doesn't matter, there's nothing you have to do. It's just when you do a substantial improvement for the fifty percent of the assessed value, uh, or market value, whichever is, is greater, or you build new. And so, we felt if you're doing that level of construction, whether you put the elevation of that, you know, first floor here or here, it doesn't add, it's not a major expense, you know, because, because if you're, you know, you're building new, you know, it's not like we're saying, oh, you have an existing house, you gotta raise it up, that's not, that's not the case. It's only for substantial improvements and, and new construction.
Okay.
So, absorb that, and, uh, we will be back to talk about that. Kristin and the, and Madeline from the RPC will be coming to talk about that at your December twenty second meeting.
Look forward to that, nice Christmas present.
Are there any other?
You're not the flood zone.
On the, on the agenda for the twenty second, or is it all zoning and this? Is there anything else?
Uh, I believe there is one, yes.
There is?
Yeah, yeah, but we're taking, I mean, you know, that's why we're kind of in the time crunch, we are, because there's no ever time to put these zoning amendments on the agenda, because we always have applications. And sometimes you just gotta have these take priority and, and put them on the agenda, so. You know, that's, they are, yes. Yeah, they're just gonna have to, you know, there, I think there's one right now.
Okay.
Uh, on it. Uh.
Doesn't matter, I don't.
I don't, I think it's small, yes, 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 yes. We've got a few in, in the queue, and I don't know which one of the three that is going on the twenty second, so I don't, I can't say. Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, so.
Just curious.
All right, thank you, Dave. Moving along, we've got a continued public hearing on the application of Jerry and Christine Sherrett for the subdivision of an existing twenty four point six two acre parcel located at one hundred Beach Hill Road into, in seven residential building lots. Subdivision property is located in the U R rural zoning district, is tax map parcel number thirteen dash one, and is planning board case number twenty two dash fourteen. And do you have anything to, to start this off with, or to continue with, Dave, or just go?
Uh, yeah, sure. The, like you said, um, the applicant submitted an application plan, some supporting documents dated August thirtieth, and revisions dated October eighteenth, uh, those copies were previously provided. Meeting was conducted, TRC, we had two TRCs, uh, in September and, and, uh, October. UEI has, uh, provided comments, and they're also enclosed. The applicant did appear before this board on November tenth, presented their plans. The public hearing was open, and the board discussed the applicant's waiver request, but no action was taken. The applicant was tabled, uh, and then a sitwalk was scheduled and occurred, uh, Tuesday, just the other day. And majority of the board, uh, was in attendance.
So, Dave, once, excuse me, I think, I thought we had said something about when we do a sitwalk, we were gonna read that into the minutes at the next meeting, like, who went? Didn't we? I feel like we made that part of our process before. You don't have your attendance sheet, do you?
It's in my office, I.
I think we had done something with that, I think we wanted that in the record, and I don't know, you need to do it now, but I think it was.
We have had, we have had minutes from.
Yes, exactly, I think we did try to make that part of the hearing next time we were, you know, here.
We were all there, plus Dan and.
Everyone here was here.
Right.
Plus, plus Dan and Jen Martel.
Yes.
And Shatran.
Yep.
And Jen Martel, right?
Yeah.
Is there anybody else?
Don't you have the public sign in too?
The public sign in was Mr. and Mrs. Sterrett, and then there was another couple.
Yeah.
There was a couple, I forget their name, Robert and maybe, I, I forget.
You guys know?
Shell.
Oh, Burns, Michelle.
Burns, Shell Burns and Robert Burns, right?
Okay.
Yeah, Michelle and Robert Burns, and then Corey was.
Oh, yeah, there was a difference.
Was the engineer's applicant, Eric was not.
Thank you.
There.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, finally, the applicants requesting, you know, three waivers.
Yep.
Uh, no action was taken, they're on the back, uh. And, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. We missed you the other morning, yes, we missed you.
I had to be in Sanford, unfortunately.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Corey did a great job, he knows, you guys know him, so I figured that was a safe trade off. But for the record, I'm Eric Sarre from Alls Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant, I've got Jerry Starett here, Christine is commuting back from work. I understand you guys had a good sitwalk, a very productive sitwalk, is what I was told, which is not the norm.
It's, it's, we had a very interesting sitwalk.
Yep, well, let me point out the one thing that's changed on the plan, and then we'll talk about the sitwalk. If I can figure out how to use this thing, there we go. The only real substantive change is in here, where the plans you have before you actually connect the back lot, this guy here, with a little strip of land out to Beach Hill Road.
Yeah.
That's it. That way, it puts the driveway within their property. There's still a grading, he's been out around it, but that's it. So, that lot did get a little smidgen bigger. But, uh, let's talk about zoning, we just went through that, and the, uh, push for this project was the impending zoning change, which would have changed the lot size, which really, you know, lit a fire under us to get this in and filed before you. And I understand there was also some talk about wanting a potential cluster here, um, on this larger piece to the right, and the lots being, on the left being okay. But I want to get your read on that and have a little conversation about that. The lots have shown, yes, the slope there is fairly steep, um, but we did grade out every single one of these lots, and that did go through the town engineer underwood, and they don't have any further comments, I want to understand. It shows that these lots are developable, as shown. That's proven out by the two lots on either side, uh, the Sterretts, which is the lot right in the middle, there on the slope, and the Nordens, the gentleman who was at the meeting last time, he's actually a little bit steeper than that section of slope right in the front here with these three lots here. So, it proves that it is doable, so it's not this, um, obstacle to, to building a, a home there at all. Granted, I, I own a lot, uh, that's probably about sixty seven percent in terms of grade.
Wow.
I intend to develop it. It's not around here, but, uh, it's definitely possible. But I think I'd rather take questions or comments from you guys, and I was not at the sitwalk, so you, you saw it, so what did you think?
Do you want to start?
Well, I, I mean, I think all of us were quite concerned about the grading and the steepness of the, of the slope coming off Beach Hill. And, and I think that there were some conversations, I had walked down the hill and was heading back toward the other lots, and it seems like you and a few of you stayed behind, and I suspect that you got into some details about ideas.
Yeah, unfortunately, we didn't all stay together, but just that happens sometimes.
So, I'd love to hear what you had.
We're trying to herd cats out there, come on. The chair was having a hard time, tried to lasso you and bring you back. You're very evasive when you want to.
Yes, and I stayed on the road, I couldn't go hiking down the hill, sorry.
So, I'm curious.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
What you talked about.
Uh, I think it was really you and I.
Yes, and Dave was there to talk.
Yeah, so, we did actually spend, um, a lot of time going at the slope, the sloped lots, you know, focusing on lots four, five, six, and seven, um, with the owners and that group. And I think what happened is, I think part of our board went that way earlier, got ahead, and then as we trailed in there, it just got in more, into a little bit more detail. So, we discussed, um, the slope and also got down onto lots, we actually went down into lot seven with Corey. And, you know, in terms of the, I, I, when I do a sitwalk, I try to envision, like, suspend zoning for a minute, suspend requirements, suspend the master plan, just actually look at the real earth. And say, you know, if I could do what I wanted to do here, money's not an object, the zoning's not an object, what would make the most sense for this land?
Yep.
And I think I shared a lot of my feelings with the, with the owners and with the group personally, and I think Lang would have been as well. And for me personally, when I walked on that property, I thought it would be not ideal to build the home sites as depicted on, on, uh, page C three, tucking houses into that steep grade. And, and I think Mr. Sarre is correct, it's not the most dramatic grade I've ever looked at, it's not unbuildable, it's not unmanageable. But in terms of utility of the land, I don't think it's the highest and best either.
If I could add, we, there is a, a home to the.
Right?
East, yeah.
Yeah, that has that.
That shows on that slope, and it shows you're gonna have some, that their back porch is, it must be twenty feet almost off the ground. It just is not, I don't think is desirable now. Of course, you save a lot of money, because you don't have to put a lot of fill in. Again, in order to do this, you're talking about moving a lot of soil and, or bringing in soil and fill, and that's additional expenses, I saw that, but. Other than that, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I mean, we just, we, we had a good amount of discussion about, you know, potential home sites versus what's shown. So, we kind of got out of the box a little bit.
That's totally.
You know, trying to just kind of take a step back.
I, I looked at this too, and I agree with it, the bottom flat part.
Yeah.
You could definitely cluster in a couple of homes, it's true, you get a road down there that meets the road requirements, and that's the catch. Because that's a lot of fill, I can't go as steep with a road as I can a driveway. And then you get a cul-de-sac, these guys aren't developers, on, 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 where it just becomes not manageable.
Sure. As, let me jump in there.
Yeah.
As we suggested to the TRC, you're asking for three waivers from things. I said, we said, do a shared driveway, and you don't need to meet standards and ask for that waiver. And I think we also discussed that here too, because you keep going back to the cul-de-sac, but I think the TRC and the planning board, no one was ever saying, build one of those.
Well, I, I look at it from a public safety standpoint, I don't think the fire department's gonna let you, let us do something down there without a turnaround. I, I don't see it.
Well, turnaround's not a seventy five foot radius cul-de-sac.
Well, you're gonna back a fire truck up, up the hill around a sharp curve.
No, you can have a couple of driveways off of it to actually one act as just a hammer. I mean, I, I think, I think the point is, is it was worth exploring, that's what we.
Yeah.
You know, you can say they won't, but I don't know if they will or won't, and we haven't had that conversation yet.
But I would tell you, from a board perspective, if you were going to try to have, say, just talking here, if you're trying to have four houses in that area of the existing lot, and you had one curb cut versus four, boy, that's a waiver I'd want to grant.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Oh, I got you.
And, and I think substantial reduction in cost in terms of the buildable cost, you know.
Well, it transfers the, the obligation of, or the construction cost away from the homeowners who are buying the lot onto the applicant.
Right.
Which is not feasible, at least, at least for this applicant.
I mean.
I, I think what would have to happen, you'd have to pair up with a developer to pull that off.
Or, I guess it just depends on how you want to do it, right? The, if you're gonna, I get what you're saying, if you're gonna sell, are you talking about like selling one-off lots?
Well, the, these right here are one-off lots.
Yeah.
So, whoever buys them is on the hook for any site improvements to the house, any kind of fill, the driveway septic, on and on and on and on. If you've got a cluster situation, unless you take these four and combine them down the hill and you build a road, you gotta build a road first.
Right.
So, that's on the applicant.
Sure.
To do that before you can start, maybe you can sell them before, but you've got to build it before anybody can get down there and do their thing.
Right.
So, it transfers that financial obligation away from, you know, the, the homeowner in this situation here to the applicant.
Yeah, difference between a existing road frontage lot.
Yes.
So, but at the same time, uh, there's three that still look like they have that potential. And the other thing, um, I mean, I guess part of that stuff we get involved in, Mr. Sarre, but obviously some of it isn't really our purview.
Yeah.
I mean, and it truly, very debatable whether that's a hardship criteria too, right? So, we can debate it, but it's, financial hardship is not necessarily supposed to be the argument.
Yeah, I agree.
Right? So, um, the other thought that we did discuss a little less, but I thought was interesting, was potentially doing more cluster, uh, in the Old Town Farm Road area.
Okay.
And potentially leaving more of the Beach Hill Road area in conservation, if there's a way to take those development rights. And we're also trying to see if there were, um, you know, bonuses that you might be able to secure.
Yeah, I didn't see any in the ordinance that applied.
Because we were thinking maybe there was at least one, if you were doing the cluster, which, you know, that helps. So, that was kind of what our, a lot of our discussion was, I think. Did you guys get into other stuff?
No, but I, yeah, we were looking, I think we, I was kind of looking at doing something more on Old Town Farm Road too.
Yeah.
I, I kind of came home and looked at that more closely, and I'm not, I didn't really come to any great conclusions on that.
It's, it's a little bit tougher in there because of the existing house.
Right.
The barn that we're trying to save, and then you've got the little wetland pockets here.
Yeah, it's great.
With the buffers coming in, so all you've got is this little strip here.
Yeah.
And then this little strip that goes up to the road, so it's a weird shape to try to do anything. I don't think we could build, I mean, I guess we could build a common driveway, but I, I look at it, it's two units, which is what we're showing now.
Yeah.
Doesn't really change things.
Well, two units if they're a couple acres each, I mean, that's, that's not a cluster, so. If you went cluster, it would be small, I mean, we, I, I actually looked at that and I said, geez, that doesn't look like much less acreage than, uh, we approved the project, Grissette's project, I think that's similar to their meadow.
Right.
Which, how many units is that?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yeah.
Not single family, two acre lots, but I looked at the market and eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, a builder isn't gonna pay you a hundred grand for those, they're gonna pay more than that.
Yeah.
So, I don't know in terms of the net value to the property owner now, if the development cost is lower for the developer.
No, you're right about that.
The property owner is probably gonna be at least whole.
I, I think, what we want to do, I'm gonna throw this out on the table here, as a condition of approval tonight, stick with these three as is and leave the rest of it alone, take away all the lot lines, the easements, everything, make it go away, and then they can do whatever they want within the future, come back to you if they want to pursue the cluster. But in this case, they can get an approval now because they need it. And so, the Mylar would just reflect those three lots.
I would think.
So that.
Still need the waivers.
Five, six, and seven.
You're right, you still need the waivers, so, so, yeah, so let's not get ahead of that, so, but I would say go to the twenty second with a clean plan.
We still need the waivers, it's the challenge.
Yeah, we need to do the waivers first.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, no, I'm saying, but if you get there, maybe, maybe we, you know, wait the twenty second to get it, get it.
Well, I, I think it's just the, the expense and the time to do a, a road design here and redo the whole thing, I, I don't think they can do it, to be honest with you. And it's unfortunate, but that's just the way it is.
Not to, I don't know enough about this to even, I should probably not even bring it up, but to do, if, if you did a cost analysis of building the road so that the houses in, um, lot four, five, six were down in the meadow, would that, I mean, would they not make that up? And I, that, that's really not our purview, but I'm just wondering. Seems like they would get, because now they'd have a road into an area where the building of a house isn't necessarily on the bank, and it might be a more desirable.
So, if the road was there, you could get more for the lots, because you wouldn't have to buy a lift.
Right. No, off of Beach Hill.
Off of Beach Hill.
Off of Beach Hill.
Well, I, I think ultimately, guys, this is so, we're not, yes, it's a good point, but yeah, it's not, it's not our job.
And it's not our job to design.
At the end of the day, we've given a lot of advice on this.
Yeah.
More than normal, and, and I'm happy to do that, but at the same time, we have to respond to the application. The application is asking us to consider lots one, two, and three.
Yeah, I totally understand.
It's nine o'clock, and they're asking us to potentially take action.
Yep.
So, I think we need to respond to that.
I think so, yep.
That's fine.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
So, the waivers are the challenge to me, in that, in that, in that question is, if you're, I understand, I, I understand what they're asking, I understand they're asking for minimal, actually. I understand they're asking for minimal, actually, less than what we're looking at. I get all that, but at the same time, you know, the waivers are still the challenge, and that's not a small challenge, and it is what it is. It's part of the master plan, and it's part of trying to...
But if we are... If we agree to basically look at the lots 1 through 3.
Yeah.
As what's being proposed tonight.
Some of the waivers aren't there.
And we approve or disapprove waivers, does that... Do the... Does... Do those three lots require these waivers?
Yes, because it's a 20-acre parcel.
Yeah. So, no matter what, to do the two-acre lots.
Okay, still the total... Okay, all right.
The acreage being...
Because when I'm looking at the 20-inch trees, I don't think there's any 20-inch trees there anyway.
Well, that's...
That's true.
Just what I was reading.
Technically, the regulation says on the entire property.
Yeah, it does.
So, the existing conditions plan would have to be...
Yeah, so on the property, yes, so I see the request.
And then as far as the two acres zoning here, the two-acre lots, that's outside the cluster.
So, the second portion, whatever evolves, would be a second...
Yes.
Would be a separate hearing, is what I'm...
And actually, rereading the draft ordinance before I came in tonight, the current rule is 20 acres for a cluster. That's changing to 10. So, this would not accept the remaining land from the cluster ordinance, so we'd still have to come back if they wanted to do anything here and go through that process.
That's all a lot of the acres, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be a little ridiculous to hold them to that standard later and not now.
Yeah, yeah, right.
He's right.
On, you know, the open space, when I look at this, and, you know, Eric said, oh, build a road, build a road. You know, you could do an open space development on this and not build a road.
Right.
And use the existing road as your... And just show a yield plan like that, and then make 25,000 square foot lots on it, and save a lot more. I mean, you know, with less frontage. So, I just wanna like... When you're thinking about the open space development waiver, you think like, what do you, you know, what are you deciding, and what's possible with that lots?
Right.
And what's unique, and what's, you know...
So, would we be able...
You don't have to build a road to do an open... I don't like calling it cluster. Open space development on this. You have two roads that you can utilize.
So, could we... That's a great point. Could we do it on just part of the property?
What do you mean?
If they said, we'd like to go forward lots 1, 2, and 3, that section of our land, and leave the rest out of this subdivision, what would you...
I get... I think you can do whatever you want. I would wanna be a little clearer, though. That's a pretty big change, and I don't... Wouldn't recommend taking action on that tonight. That's a pretty big change. Say, oh, let's make it a condition of approval, we can go seven lots to three, and get rid of them all, and do some, you know, in open space. So, I... Hit me up, please. I would reckon, you know, like, you know, I would recommend saying, okay, get me a new plan and show me exactly what you're doing before you took action on it, you know, with that. But yes, to answer your question, yes, you could do something like that. You can do what, you know, you can give a partial waiver on...
Right.
Yeah.
I look at it where the only change is we're erasing some lot lines.
Or what?
We're erasing some lot lines. To come back in a month would be, hey, look at the same three lots you saw last month. Kinda wastes everybody's time.
If you think you got the votes tonight, you are.
Hey, if you guys don't...
But if you think you're going down tonight...
You guys don't give me the...
If you think you're going down tonight, hint, hint...
It's almost...
You may wanna... Listen. You know, I mean, it's... We're not trying to be difficult. I think we're really trying to work with you folks. We really are.
Just wanna make sure it works.
But you, you know... Yeah. The regulation is what it is, and it doesn't... It does not encourage this type of development on this type of lot.
Yeah.
It discourages it.
But it's also a very unique parcel.
It is a very unique parcel. It is absolutely a unique parcel. I really wish you didn't have that hill. There would be a lot more palms.
Absolutely.
And it is what it is, but it just... To me, when you have a slow challenge like this parcel does, it screams to me for one access point.
Yeah. No, I agree with you, but also, I led off with the zoning change.
Yeah.
That not pressing. They don't need to do these other lots.
Right, right.
So, and as I think I said the last time, if this had come in and we had no idea about zoning changes, I would tell them to cut off that existing house.
Right.
And leave the rest of it alone if they need more money. Let's say Grandma lives longer than expected, that's great. Cut off another lot and just go in that process and try to preserve as much as possible. Because as I think I said last month, they don't wanna do this.
Right.
They're in a position where they have to.
Sure.
And it's unfortunate, but that's where we are.
Yep.
And I do think that doing what I'm talking about, just the three lots on the left, that actually may sort of inhibit them a little bit and handicap them a little bit in the future, because it's taking some land out of what could be part of the yield plan later on down the road.
Of course it is.
Or the open space calculation down the road, where it has to have a certain percentage of upland.
Right.
And I think they're minimal to that.
Dave, how much would they have to do plan-wise to put together this three lot?
Well, they would have to remove the notes.
Would they have to do all of, like, all of this, or would they do... I mean, how much?
No, no. They wouldn't have to do much. They'd have to remove, you know, a lot of the notes, like, look at all the notes, go through all the notes, all the parcel callouts, you know, remove those, move the lines, yeah.
It's more deleting than anything else.
Right.
And the grading plans that you see in your package are really only for the steep lots anyway, which that sheet could disappear, so take it out.
Yeah.
And as you change, because then our subdivision says, you know, when you do a parcel, you need to see what the whole is. I guess I would recommend going to the waivers first. Figure that, because that's gonna dictate the...
Okay.
Okay? Right? Am I wrong?
For lots 1, 2, and 3 only.
For the public.
You do have to open it to the public.
No, no, wait a minute. You don't have lots 1, 2, and 3 only.
We don't.
No.
No, we don't.
The waivers are different, they'll be different, some of them.
Oh, the waivers would still be the same, but I think what Dave's getting at is it applies to the...
No, the waiver... The significant tree waiver wouldn't be needed.
Well, the ordinance has to be the whole property, though.
No, the significant tree waiver... The only reason the significant tree waiver was recommended, because you... No, you went into the steep slopes and you were disturbing that. We have to look at that.
Okay.
And then you're proposing something, and then that area of disturbance, you're supposed to identify those trees. Usually, if you came in and you didn't have the steep slopes, and you just had like a two-lot subdivision, we don't require this, because we don't know what you're clearing and what you're not.
Okay. Well, in this case, if we're just gonna go with the three lots, I guess we don't need the...
You don't need it, because there's nothing there, right?
So, yeah, it's all...
Already cleared.
Yeah.
What's the other?
The underground utilities.
The underground utilities we pulled, so those will be undergrounds.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, we pulled that.
Okay. And then the perimeter buffer.
The perimeter buffer, yes. In this case, you already have it in essence, because you've got wetland buffer up along the street here. And this lot is existing, the house is already there.
Well, that lot doesn't exist.
Well, yeah, but the house does. The house exists, so...
So, the perimeter buffer's still there.
Yeah.
Like, it still applies.
John, what do you think? What are you thinking?
Usually, I have something... If they're willing, I think they probably need to have a little conference, don't you?
What's that? Well, it's up to you. Do you want to lay them out? So, we don't need that one. You guys willing to adjourn for five minutes?
Yes.
Well, we'll... Yeah, we can just...
We can just keep going, you guys.
We can resist this, and we can hop to our other stuff on our agenda. We're not... We'll stop immediately, come back.
Yeah.
It's not that long. We can just finish up a couple things, someone would...
Okay.
I just wanna...
Okay, we'll just...
Can you hold everything, move on?
Do we have to motion to stop this one? Okay, good.
So, can we get the...
What are we gonna do?
Master plan, you know, just keep going down to business?
Do we have another hearing tonight?
Yes, we do.
We do.
Yeah, but nobody's here.
Nobody's here for that.
So, what do you do?
Oh, you're here for that?
Yeah, they're there. That's why I asked. Nobody's here for Cambio.
Oh.
Oh. That's what I get for assuming.
We're gonna have to table it until the 22nd, I would imagine. I don't know why they... Maybe they felt the board would take... I mean, maybe you can on this one, I mean...
It's a simple lot line adjustment.
It's a lot line adjustment.
Pretty easy.
Of 2,000 square feet.
Yes, I thought...
Make a shed and a driveway.
All right. We're in the middle of a hearing.
We're in the middle of a...
What do we just do with this existing case? PB case 22-14, what is that?
We're just... Just, we're getting back to it.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm gonna... All right, so we're gonna go to PB case 22-18, and I'm gonna...
22-18.
All right, so I...
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion. So, we have an application of Todd and Corinne Cambio for a lot line adjustment to the common boundary line between the properties at 6 Hillside Drive, Hillside Avenue, and 8 Hillside Avenue. The subject properties are located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, tax map parcels 97-5-8 and 97-5-7. Planning board case number 22-18, that is on our agenda for this evening. There is nobody present from the applicant side to present this, and it is appropriate for someone to be here in case the board has any questions or members of the public have any questions. So, I am gonna make a motion to continue that application, planning board case number 22-18, until December 22 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Continue or...
Well done.
Tabletale. Same thing.
Continue, yes.
Is there a second?
I did.
Okay. No discussion? Are those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? So be it.
We can get that one out of the way.
Perfect, thank you.
Now, Dave, you had some things you'd wanna talk about, you said.
Well, just, you know, performance guarantees reductions released. I did have one. Philip Sexton Academy asked for their remaining $25,000 bond to be released at the, at the new dorm.
The new dorm.
On Front Street. I don't know if you guys seen Chancery, very nice...
Yeah.
Very nice... Yeah, very nice building, nice job. There was a little bit, the... You know, we look at like 85% established vegetation, and the majority of... Well, that was met, but there were some areas behind it where the stream is, where they seeded, and it was... It was late, and they didn't get the sun, you know, because it was down by that little drainage area, yeah, that little gully, but the silt sock was still, you know, in place.
In growing light.
And, you know, ground's been frozen, so there really wasn't any, you know, wasn't any erosion, but I just had them shore up the, you know, a couple of spots in the silt sock, and said, you know, just commit, you know, that seed should pop, but it's not gonna pop this year. It's gonna, you know, be in the spring, but it met the majority, so I did release them with their... With the condition that they, you know, put it on their schedule right away in the spring, but the erosion control's in place and so forth, so they're off on that.
Good.
And that was the only one, and there were no... Oh, did I tell you about the... Oh, it's not a field modification. Norrea Energy. Did I tell you about that one?
No.
Okay. It wasn't a field modification, because they came... You approved the plan, and they built the plan, you know, they're building out the plan as approved, but to the south of the entrance, there was an island, you know, that ended. But they were... Continued that island, because they wanted to establish there was four existing parking spots on the neighboring lot. They wanted to keep those, but it's like, they're on a curb cut. You'd have to... If you want to, you have to extend that curb down, and we made them extend the sidewalk, to, if you want to, you have to extend that curb down, and we made them extend the sidewalk, because they, they've done a lot, they've added more sidewalk, and it, but it's all been stopped, so they built the plan, so it was all within the town's right of way, so it was done through DPW.
DPW.
Yeah. So, I, it wasn't technically a field modification, once I realized that, I was like, oh, this isn't me, guys, it's you, DPW, Paul Blass, it's the town engineer, but it's actually, I think it was an improvement. When you come up, you'll see this additional sidewalk coming down Epping Road that wasn't originally on the plan, and, and the sidewalk that connected to the light, there was a future connection going off to the right and going across the crosswalk, that's all installed now, and it goes across the crosswalk and along that island, which was never part of the original plan, so positive improvement.
Good.
It's a nice shape, too, it's not-
Yeah.
I like how they've designed that.
Yeah, it's another brand name, Gasoline, that's good. Anything else, Dave?
Alright. No, that's it.
Well-
Perfect timing.
Can I make a suggestion? Can you get a cup holder? That'd be great for this, that would be nice to have.
I've almost been waiting for it to fall over on you, yeah.
It's like, the only flap part of the whole thing.
But it's done well.
Bring one of the little things, a hanger's off the side of it, you know.
Maybe I'll donate one. You might get Glare to do it. Be made a whole.
Right.
Um, in speaking with Jerry, um, we'd like to proceed with the three lots on the left as is, get rid of all the lots on the right-hand side, leave that 18-plus acre piece alone, and in the future, if they wanna come back and do something, they will.
Okay.
And, and as I explained before, the revisions to the plan are deletions, more than anything else, it's deleting those lot lines. A lot of the notes stay, to be honest with you, I'll have to figure out some acreages in there, but that's it. So, it's just a Mylar at that point, for signature, after the waivers get granted.
Right. So, I think you should open it to them.
So, yeah, okay. So, I'm gonna open the hearing to the public for a minute to see, save anybody in, in the meeting this evening, would like to come to the podium and speak, and ask you to introduce yourselves, so our viewers at home will know who's speaking. If you'd like to speak, please step up at this time.
You don't-
If you're not, that's fine. Don't-
No.
That's good. No one, anybody welcome to speak? Then I'll close the public session at this point, thank you. Back to the board.
Okay, so, this is a pretty significant change in what we're looking at.
Yeah, sure.
I understand Mr. Sari's comment about materially what changes on the plan we're looking at, I think we're all skilled enough to just focus on the section, um, so it, it just probably comes back to how we feel about the concept in general.
Yeah.
Because of the open space we request.
Yeah, I, I think that looking at this area on the left, given what's there, the barn, the wetlands, the existing house, we're only gonna fit two units over there anyway, so it doesn't materially change the use that would end up being out there.
So, you guys-
Are we clear on that?
I mean, are we okay hearing this with the change in the, in the-
I mean legally, I don't know that we are.
Yeah.
You know, we-
Sort of struggling.
You don't have-
Yeah, I'm struggling, well, I've never seen, you know, like, I'm not saying, I'm not minimizing, the, the changes are minimal essentially on the plan.
Right.
But to me, that's a, going from seven lots to three-
Yeah.
-is a pretty big change, and it, and it might affect your thinking on the waiver and granting the waiver and not granting. It just seemed like, it's, I've never dealt with it, so I don't know.
We don't need to.
I don't know. I guess at the end of the day, I'm not too worried about if the board, what the board wants to do and how to proceed.
So, I think not worried.
Not worried is good.
What is not worried?
Uh, I guess I'm not worried from a legal standpoint, I, I'm not, I'm not worried about it.
Okay.
From a legal standpoint.
It's not like we went to 14 lots.
Yeah.
We went to three.
Correct.
Yeah, we were not in grace.
That's pretty easy.
Anything's gonna be contingent on getting all the corrected forms and everything back to you by the date certain, so.
I, I also look at it from a, 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 in a butter standpoint, this isn't very contentious at all.
Right.
I had no butters, clearly, negatively about it, so it's not something that if doing this is really gonna light a fire.
I think we all like those three lots.
Yeah, I don't-
I don't think there's any issue there.
I like taking the other ones off, personally, I mean-
No, but we, we saw nothing wrong with those lots.
No, no, exactly.
They're all fields.
We would like, we would, yeah.
Yeah.
So, if you can step back in time and imagine this came forward as a-
Three.
-three lot, additional three lot subdivision.
Yep.
Uh, that's really what we're being asked to do, and I don't think it's that hard to do, personally.
Just-
I walked that area, did everybody get a chance to walk that area?
Yeah.
I'm probably the only one that didn't, I couldn't-
Oh, you did?
No, I stayed on the road, not, oh, you probably did.
But you were able to see that area.
I was able to see it, and, yeah, yeah, I did.
It was all wide open.
Right. I did it from a distance, I didn't walk down in there, but yes, I did. I was sitting down there taking two-
Question?
Lot, lot- It's like a Billy goat.
What is lot four now?
Yep.
No, no, I'm sorry, there is no, the lot in the middle, that's the one, but that's not in the picture, the one that just has house, house on it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not it, okay, so-
That's not in the plan, right.
What happens, Dave, help, three, four, five, six, and seven, and all of the conservation land?
Stays with the house.
Just stays with-
It becomes vacant.
It becomes-
It's a vacant lot.
It's a lot.
It's just a lot.
It's a lot.
Nothing on it, just field and woods.
Right now, it's part of, it's the whole thing, so that's just so, I mean, you could revisit this in the future.
Yes.
So, we're not precluding him from doing anything with that other piece of land, or the rest of the land, right?
No.
We're just cutting off this, these three lots.
Yep.
And the lot, the house-
It's really a four lot subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
Really, that's what we're looking at.
And the one that the house is already on-
Perfect, that's exactly it.
Oh, yeah, it is a four lot, you're doing a buildable lot, that's a buildable lot, not a four lot.
Technically, some of them-
So, if you did two lots, then you, you know, well, it'd still be a buildable lot, but you'd, one of the third lot could be that one-on thing, but it would own the rest, so it could be a three lot subdivision.
Oh, my-
They're asking for a four-
Say that again?
Yes, please.
They're asking for a four lot subdivision, so you're creating four buildable lots, essentially.
See, my preference would be-
So, someone could put a single-family home on that larger leftover lot, right? By right.
Oh, okay.
Which lot is he talking about?
And then part of me seems to think it's not really-
The house is already subdivided.
It's not really the regulations, but part of me seems to think that, I don't know, the owner might be, that might be doing a disservice to the owner, if I owned this property, I don't know if I'd wanna switch that, when I could think of, okay, an open space developer, and I could get more lots around that corner, you're giving up some potential, development potential of your lot, so, but that's up to them, if they wanna do that. That's a little lullaby, this, when you, when you go to that change, that's, I mean, you're talking 200 feet of frontage, you go down to, you go down to 80, you go down to two acres, down to, down to 25,000 square feet, I mean, that's a fourth of it, so you could-
I, I agree with you, but you-
That's a big change, but-
It, it is, but you gotta look at the wetlands and the setback.
I can see it, right there, there's-
Lots from a yield plan standpoint, that's, that's the yield-
That's unusable, yeah.
Maybe, I don't know. Have you done a yield plan on that?
I can't, I can't get more than three lots.
Have you done a yield plan?
I, I have, I have not, but I can't, I can't get more than three lots on there, because I-
Because of the frontage.
No, I'm talking about a yield plan on the entire parcel.
No, I haven't.
Okay, well.
I, I saw the geogram and said, there's no road here, that's unreasonable, and I saw the shape of the wetlands with the fingers sticking out of-
Well, yield plan is a road unreasonable altogether.
What engineer doesn't propose an unreasonable road on a yield plan?
It happens, I, I-
I don't think we've seen a reasonable one yet.
I don't know if I've seen a reasonable, yeah, exactly, I haven't seen a reasonable road on a yield plan.
This is true, but I look at, from a yield plan standpoint-
I can think of a developer who would look at that and say, four lots right there.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, maybe that's-
The frontage is there, and the upland then is there, I could maybe squeeze out one more by adding a cul-de-sac, but that's in the area on the right.
And then the 50% density bonus on the conservation, I don't know how you didn't see that.
What's the 50% density bonus?
It's that you, you put 50%, it looks like you're putting 50% of the undevelopable, uh, land into open space. You said you didn't see any bonus, I see a bonus of one unit right there.
Yeah, that's why I said that would be the eighth unit, I think.
Oh, 'cause earlier you said that there were no bonuses.
I, I, I stand corrected.
Okay.
Um, I, I think that would be the bonus, but I think, and when we started this process, we looked at building a road, which is not something that they-
Yeah, you don't have to build a road, you got two roads right there. You could do frontage lots, just small existing road.
Oh, 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 just small.
That's, it's just, I don't know, it's just, anyway, anyway.
What you're saying is he's backing himself into the corner and the rest of the land, making it more difficult.
Use the existing, show us a yield plan, and then come back and use the existing road, and maybe you're getting four lots on the left instead of the right.
Well, it's still the same slope, though, you guys seem to be concerned about.
On the left.
On the left, on the left.
Four lots on the left, instead of three.
Lots one, two, three, could be one, two, three, and four.
But I don't wanna, I mean, like we said, we don't wanna get into designing it for them.
Right.
I gotta get one here, right, with this, that's the-
Just make it smaller.
I get one back here, 'cause I gotta save the barn, and one up here in the corner.
Oh, yeah, you could easily get one.
Yeah.
You might even get two.
So, now you're asking us to look at how many houses we're gonna have on the porch?
That's another- It's your property.
Exactly, so is it a financial disservice to the family, or do we not wanna look at that?
No, it's your property.
It's your property to do what you wish.
On that farm, so I think her input is-
Totally get it.
Look at all that.
Which is understood.
Okay. No, it's not, it's definitely-
No, it isn't, and it's not all about money when I mention it, too, it's about land productivity and the use of land and environmental protection, and the more open space and tighter the homes are, the better it is for the environment, and for stormwater and so forth, so there's a lot of other benefits, it's, it's beyond financial, so that's just where, you know, that's where we write our regulations, to try to, you know, you know, use land more efficiently, and because a lot of times we, we pay for it downstream and environmental damage and removal of trees and carbon sequestration, and, and all that, so it's kinda has a snowball effect, so it's not just fiscal.
These lots is designed to worth more money than the smaller lots, and he's only selling the land. Potentially, yeah.
So, what he said, basically, that this two-acre lot is worth-
I'm comfortable if, if we were looking forward acting on the potential three lot, and, uh, and the property of the house, your existing house, reabsorbed the remaining land, so we're not creating four new lots.
You can't do that, though.
Yeah, it's not part of the application.
Well, no, it's not, well, you, this application is in front of them, you changed the application already, you know, you don't have to argue it, you changed the application, you moved from seven lots to three in, in the last hour. So, so, no, 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 I don't need to explain it, what I'm saying is, is that lot is a corner lot, so there's no way to, and that, that existing white lot isn't, is already an existing lot.
Yeah.
So, there's no way to combine the existing house, is what you're saying, with the land. Is that what you said?
The white, the white one that was carved out before, uh-
That's already done.
The bigger parcel, I understand that. Why can't we have the same owner, right?
Oh, you mean dissolve the lot?
Yeah, if you have a voluntary lot, yeah. It's, it's separate owners.
Right.
It is separate owners.
If this one is Judy, and the other, the other one is the Stares themselves, um, so that's part of it. I get what you're going, and it does make sense.
Yeah.
But you can't, we can't-
Well, you can't. You'd be adding one to your lot.
That's exactly what Judy wants.
Great.
Unfortunately.
Is she willing to give you all of it?
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Oh, no. She just wanted us to be car lot bigger, so we would have more land, that was her, that was her thought.
Yeah.
Not the whole thing.
So, so, yeah, that's what I'm saying, the one on the left in the corner owns all of it.
Yeah.
The white lot doesn't own it.
Yeah.
Right.
So, the, the remaining land, the 18-plus acres left over, would still be under the ownership of Judy, who owns the house on the corner.
Ownership, but it's a separate lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which could just, I mean, are you gonna be back here, potentially, I mean, we don't know if that thing's gonna pass or not, in terms of the zoning change, 'cause you're dropping under the 20.
Well, no, the zoning's changing to 20 to 10.
But if it passes.
If it passes.
I mean, it's-
I got you.
Gotta go to the voter.
Yep.
Yeah, by giving a waiver on the open space for this-
Yeah.
What's the leftover, that's another question I have that I-
It's 18 and change.
Yeah, so then you're, you're, you're basically giving a waiver, if you're giving a waiver for the parcel, you're giving a waiver for the whole thing.
Right. And what Mr. Sari's suggesting, which he's right, is it's dropping, right, to 10 acres?
Well, potentially.
Potentially, exactly.
So, base, you gotta base it on that.
There's a lot in that zoning ordinance, and it, and it's really not set up to, we didn't tease different things out.
Yeah.
So, if somebody has a rub on anything in it, see ya, they're throwing it all away.
So, that highlights why I was a little concerned, and like, you know, when you go, we just missed something pretty, you know, significant, none of the board thought that, you know, and you even said, that the rest of the lot, the balance of the lot is subject to the open space development, but it's not. If you give this-
Well, I recognize that it's not.
No, I know you do, no, no, but I'm saying, I, you know, like, I, I guess that's what I'm, I, I, when I see something change like that, don't, you know, you wanna see type, okay, how are the regulations, 'cause I, I can see it's just removing lines, but how does that affect our regulations?
Well, that's it, right there.
We didn't review that in our regulations as-
Without.
Right.
So, I'd be hesitant, but the board can do what it wants.
So, you're saying, but we said, if we go to three lots, then we're eliminating the further, because, because the acreage has been shrunk below the 20, then that discussion of open space.
On the remainder of the land, the bigger parcel, wouldn't apply anymore, goes away.
What do we make-
Goes away, and then all they have to do, right now, and then these regs, is come back with a, with a subdivision, by right, with road frontage.
Yes, and then they wouldn't need a waiver.
Yeah, that's not something that we're looking at.
No, but we, I understand your position, but I gotta deal with the legal grant, so-
Absolutely.
Uh, you know, to me, if there's a way to, is there a way to, um-
Can we restrict it?
Yeah, something.
And take a condition, is it has to be, has to fall into the existing open space ordinance, if, if and when it comes back?
What if you want for two lots? What if you want for two lots, are you still allowing to have that acreage you need? Will that make the acreage?
That would make it over 20, I think, if it's 18.
It, it would.
If it's 18.
If one of-
But you're, it's not two lots, it's three lots. They went from-
Oh, yeah.
Seven, you're right.
Seven, three, seven, four.
Seven to four, not seven to three, so seven to four, and now you're asking down to three.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah.
Going down to three, or four? He's asking for three.
Yeah, he just asked, he said two, but we're, we keep referencing three lots, but it's actually four lots.
It's really four.
It's really four.
It's really four.
Yeah, because the fourth is the fourth lot, right.
So, it's, so it's lot, one, two, three, and house.
One, two, three.
And no, the rest of it.
Oh, and the rest of it, I'm sorry.
And the rest, well, one has the house, one has the house, or whatever.
I was starting to get a little lost with the conversation here.
They just, what I call is two lots.
Two top ones, the house and a new one.
Yeah, but the house-
But wants to keep his options.
To keep-
And it keeps the, it keeps the open space in play.
Right.
Does that make any sense, follow that?
Yeah.
Go from, go from four lots to three, and don't-
So, you're limiting lots to one.
Hold back, hold what, which is number three.
Maybe not do lot one.
Lot three, you do the house, and then the one behind it.
Yeah.
All right, that's, this, this one would not be in play, is what I'm hearing.
Lot one would be the remaining property.
The remaining land, yeah, so this lot line here would go away.
Yes.
So, that way you keep your-
Do you keep your option?
Your required 20 acres.
But it only gives you one lot to sell.
That's the problem.
And is that a-
And the house.
And the house, well.
Yes.
I think the intent is to rent the house, to be honest with you.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, they're, they're concerned about, you know, by leaving 18 and a half acres plus or minus on the table, it brings us under the threshold for the open space subdivision regulation. It's a way to skirt around the regulation.
Okay.
It's, it's not what you intend to do, it's not what I intend to do, but it's a possibility. Let's, let's say, let's say your whole family dies tomorrow in a fiery car crash, somebody buys it, and then they don't have to conform to the cluster, unless it's on the Mylar. If it's a condition that we put on the Mylar, may not be subdivided as a conventional subdivision, must follow Exeter Open Space, you know, subdivision regulations as amended, that would cover it.
Boy, you, you accept that tonight, and you come back and ask me for a waiver, next time I am going to tell you my answer right now.
Absolutely.
So, you better think about that one.
What I'm hearing is that's the only way you guys are gonna let me do it, anyway.
Again, we're getting ahead of ourselves, because we got, the waivers are, I'm gonna be dependent.
Well, I think it's determined to this.
The waivers, the board needs to determine if the criteria for the waivers have been...
I'm trying to determine if I'm going to take any action, period, and listen to waivers.
Oh, okay, all right.
Thanks. Well, that's what I'm doing.
I didn't, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't, I'm definitely not comfortable giving you lots one, two, three, and having the remaining lot, new lot, before, that's 18 acres. I am telling you, everyone who can hear me, that I'm not comfortable with that, and that's nothing to do with you guys personally at all. That has to do with my job on the planning board. So, and I can tell you there, you know, I'm trying to give you every benefit of the doubt, I certainly can, but I also don't feel like I can go beyond, you know, responsible action. So, I think what we're suggesting is that, figure out a way that you can make us comfortable.
I'm hesitant to put a voluntary consolidation with Stares lot on the table, because if it comes back and it's a cluster, their lot's going to shrink.
Their lot will shrink.
Their lot will shrink, they're two acres that they have now.
Well, you can give them all the conservation land, can't you? Their lot, the existing house, the white one?
I suppose.
You can give them all the conservation, make it bigger, give it all to them. Someone has to take it.
Yeah, ends up in current use, that's a good point.
Yeah.
But again, they don't want to, you know, design and engineer and build a road, so that's...
I don't think they're going to. I think you just got to show us a yield plan. You know, I mean, that's, that's my feeling. I don't, I think, given this market, I don't think you need to build a road. I think you can find a guy who will build three or four houses in Exeter without working 24/7 for...
Oh, I agree with that, but also, I don't want to leave another three or four on the table. It's value that they would have stranded.
Three or four lots?
Yeah, I mean, we've got seven on a yield plan right now in front of you.
Mm-hmm. I don't think you're losing any. I don't know how you think you're losing one.
Well, I mean, how am I going to access the land on the right, though? If the steep slope is out of play for a frontage lot, and I need to build some sort of access, a road, a common driveway, whatever, cul-de-sac or no cul-de-sac, how, I mean, that's the only way I could access that land.
I don't, I don't, I don't think the steep slope is out of play. I think what you're showing right now is pretty tough to get excited about, four curb cuts.
Well, I think you'd have four curb cuts with the cluster, anyway, or the open space.
I'd have one, coming off the slope into that nice flat land, if I was going to build in that section of that property. I would have a private driveway, common driveway, and then it would branch out into additional unit driveways, and I think, I don't think, I guarantee you, you could work with this town.
Oh, I could, I absolutely could, I'm not denying that, I'm just, I'm just trying to help my client out and get something tonight, if possible.
I understand that. I think we're pretty fast-tracked already. We had our site walk two days ago. And the site walk was pretty substantial.
Yes, yeah.
And I, you know, I think even at the site walk, we covered a lot of ground, and, you know, we suggested you might not even be here tonight, because of what we covered a lot of ground, you know? So, sidewalks are really such a critical step, it stinks when you can't do it quicker, but, I don't know, what are you thinking, I'm talking a lot?
No, I'm, well... Well...
Are you comfortable going forward and creating four new lots?
I'm not altogether.
It's not our decision, it says, they want to go ahead with at least trying it.
No, it's yours.
No, it's ours to approve it, but we're still not 100% certain that that's what they want.
No, they said what they wanted, it's just, if this was before you, they think, you know, but this is not before you, they changed this.
And that's where I'm uncomfortable.
And they were clear that they want, right, four lot, a four-lot subdivision.
Right.
Which would negate the need for an open space, an open space would not be required. If you granted the waiver for this one, it would grant the waiver for the entire balance of lots, because it would be 18, a little over 18 acres.
And then we're, then I guess they decide later on what they want to try to do in that slope, maybe sell the whole thing to a developer who would put the road in.
That would be my suggestion, or do nothing.
Or do nothing.
Well, no, or they could just come back with the, with the same exact four lot.
Same plan, this plan.
The other half of this plan, they could come back and, but you wouldn't have to have a waiver on an open space.
I don't think that would give me much traction with the board for future projects.
Well, I'm not saying it would be you, I mean, I've seen a lot, I've seen everything, I've seen this happen, oh, yeah, no, you know, boom, and they're like, yeah, so, things change.
A lot of surprises.
Well, I'm trying to get to the point, how do we do this without committing them to designing a road on this other part here, as part of the open space? Because either way, we have a couple units on the left, then we end up with this chunk of open space left over to do something with that they don't necessarily want to do right now. What would the plan look like coming back in? I mean...
How big is the house, the existing house lot, the white one, that's not part of it?
It's about two acres.
Two point one five.
So you wouldn't be over 20 if you changed lot lines, I understand the ownership thing, but...
Oh, no, no, the existing one, I don't know what the...
The white one?
The white house is 2.15.
No, 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 that's the new one with the house.
The corner lot, right?
No, no, not the corner.
Oh, not the corner lot.
The white number.
Oh, the white one, oh, oh, it doesn't have any.
It doesn't say.
But the zoning, it's been two-acre zoning for a while.
They look fairly similar, they're two acres or so.
It's about, it might be a little more than two, I don't know.
It's kind of the size of lot.
Looks like two.
A little over two.
Yeah, but it could, I guess the open space for a future subdivision could happen. It's possible. I mean, it's an ownership question that you'd have to resolve.
I'm pretty good with the three lots, if they make the fourth lot, go back to that other house.
Yeah, it's your house.
So you're talking about three lots?
Lots one, two, and three are what he's showing, and the rest goes with the existing white house, the homes.
But those are two different owners.
I understand that.
Okay. I don't think they can make that call, because both owners aren't here, tonight.
They can't make it tonight, but that can be a condition of approval.
Mm-hmm.
Condition of approval.
Which we take.
I don't like that at all.
Why?
Because you're, you're, you're saying, convey this land to someone that's not in this room, as a condition? I wouldn't go there. That's what I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there.
We're talking about the consolidation, potentially, well, he's in the room, he owns the land.
No, he doesn't own all of it, right?
It's, Christine just...
You just told us that.
Yeah, that's his mother.
It's two different houses, Judy owns it, Christine has guardianship and power of attorney, so consolidation is possible.
Boy, that's a...
All right, okay. That's what's confusing, like, you know, there's more layers.
There's a lot of layers to it.
Family stuff gets like that, you know?
Well, if it was, the plan was in front of us for the three lots, you know, that would be a lot easier to deal with, but it's not.
Which is what I would rather.
Or four lots, or whatever, whatever we're at now.
I mean, the plan would look like just deleting all the lines to the right of the white, and what goes around the white as well, I mean, it's another deletion.
So it'd be lots one, lot two, lot three are what we're looking at.
Yep.
And everything else goes with the white house.
Yes, it would be lot four.
Which then gets back to the 20 acres.
Gets back to the 20 acres.
Exactly, which gives you guys a comfort.
And it does, you know, it is what it is on that side of the project. It's what it is, it is what it is today.
And I do like your idea, if, if and when a cluster, open space would happen here, you put the open space with the white lot.
With their homestead.
With the homestead.
That gives them some control.
Yeah, it'd be in conservation, though, but I don't think you'd mind that.
It's a lot of wetlands, anyway.
Yeah, you can't do.
You're not building that anyway.
But you have control of it, which I do think matters. How does that feel to you guys? You, you're on the hot seat.
Yes, guys.
You probably need to go to the mic, I'm sorry.
You can hand the mic over.
So...
You've got to taste the recording thing.
Can I ask a question before you, I just want to clarify something about what you just said, so now we know that Christine has the ability to you, is that, does that matter in this conversation?
What's...
Whether or not he is part of the power of attorney?
Over co-owners.
He can talk about what he can talk about, and then he can't fully represent the other party, I don't think, but we, I feel like we can make it a condition, personally, I don't have a problem with that.
Why can't we just...
If we can't meet the condition, well, then you can't record the Mylar.
Exactly.
It's Christine, now, that's where I'm trying to go with it.
It's a less intense subdivision, which to me, it makes it a lot less challenging.
Doesn't matter, it's whoever has the power of attorney.
And all we have heard is how they are reluctantly subdivided, and we're making it a less lot, so we're not making it, we're potentially approving less, fewer new lots. So I think we're...
That part I get, it's whether we actually can, can do this under the circumstances and who's in the room, and who isn't. We're talking about somebody with the power of attorney, who's not here.
Why doesn't this continue for two weeks? And they can solve everything and give us a clean set of plans with everything we've agreed to tonight?
You said it's, you said it's a quick change.
I feel more comfortable that a mistake wouldn't be made.
Let's do two weeks.
That would be great.
Is there room on the agenda?
Long conversation with his wife.
Yeah.
I'm not going to be in the room, and hopefully we can get here here next time, and I think what we'll do is, if, depending on the outcome of that conversation, I can easily amend the plan, bring it back to something that, what I'm hearing.
Yeah, that really was.
Let's target...
We've got too many calls in there right now.
If you knew this coming in, you came in and you offered this, come in with, get a plan together, and get it to me by the 15th.
It's not two weeks.
That's next Thursday.
Two weeks is their meeting. I sent their package, because if you show up, let us, give us time to review it and absorb it.
Don't come in that night with it.
That's why I didn't, that's why I didn't...
Get us to the 15th, then we go to the meeting on the 22nd. And we have a plan of what they're actually proposing.
It'll take us 10 minutes.
And I'll see what waivers, you know, the tree waiver might be out.
Yeah.
I'll revise it, so we all know exactly what we're doing, and what waivers are needed.
That would be nice.
Yeah, I'm just too uncomfortable.
Oh, I absolutely do, it makes sense, it's...
I'd say agree with this.
We're not, yeah.
You don't want to be in the hot seat, either, you don't want to be in the hot seat, speaking for...
Yeah, she would.
She'd have to be.
Unless you're on the power of attorney, you have to be.
That truly will facilitate it, in the long run, then we'll have clear air.
That'll make everybody feel better, I think.
Cards on the table, and not all of them. All right, I'm asking for a motion to table to a certain date, please.
So moved.
Second.
December 22nd, 7:00 PM.
December 22nd, 7:00 PM, and I heard a second?
Yes, it was when me.
Okay, voice vote, those who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.